Hey, aloha everyone. Welcome to the public hearing. If you're just joining, we're gonna give us, give it a couple more minutes. We'll start around 5:33. Okay, aloha and mahalo for joining. My name is David Sakota. I'm the Fisheries Program Manager for the State of Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources. I will be conducting tonight's public hearing along with the DAR staff at our in-person host sites. It is now 5:33 PM and this public hearing is called to order. This is a formal statewide public hearing on the proposed adoption of Hawaii Administrative Rules, Chapter thirteen dash sixty point one-one, Kipahulu Community-Based Subsistence Fishing Area Maui. To ensure abundant stocks of priority species and high-quality fishing now and in the future for residents and visitors to Kipahulu, and to reaffirm and perpetuate fishing practices that were customarily and traditionally exercised for native Hawaiian subsistence, culture, or religion along the southeast coast of Maui. As required by law, the proposed rules have been drafted in Ramsayer format, copies of which can be found in the announcement section of the DAR website. Those attending the meeting in person may ask DAR staff for a copy. This public hearing is being simultaneously livestreamed to the DAR YouTube channel for anyone wishing to observe the public hearing but not provide testimony. For your convenience, the address to the DAR YouTube channel is at the top of this slide, and the link to the livestream has also been pasted into the chat. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public the opportunity to provide comments in the form of oral and written testimony on these proposed amendments, or on these proposed new rules. Approval to conduct this public hearing was obtained from the Board of Land and Natural Resources at their board meeting on June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. The legal notice of this public hearing was published on the October first, two thousand and twenty-three Sunday issue of the Honolulu Star Advertiser. Additionally, notice of this public hearing was posted on the draft rules and public notices page of the DAR website where digital copies of the draft rules in Ramsayer format can be found, as well as posted on the announcements page of the DAR website. First, we will watch a short video explaining the proposed administrative rules. We will then begin the public testimony period, which will be conducted as follows. Everyone testifying via Zoom was required to pre-register in order to get the link to testify. We will keep registration open throughout the public hearing, and we'll monitor our email in case anyone has trouble registering or joining the Zoom meeting to provide their testimony. However, if you are unable to join via Zoom, you may still provide oral testimony at one of the in-person hearing locations listed in this slide, or you may submit written testimony by following the directions at the bottom of the slide. Everyone testifying in person at one of the host sites should have written their information down on the sign-in sheet provided at the host site. Those attending in person who have not signed up to testify but would like to provide testimony can alert the DAR public hearing officer at your in-person site at this time, and your name will be added to the list. It is important that everyone who wishes to testify provide their name and contact information, so we have an accurate record of everyone providing testimony. You will be called upon by a member of the DAR staff when it is your turn to testify. We ask that all individuals attending virtually keep their microphones muted when not speaking. We will take testimony in the following order. First, we will take in-person testimony from people who have been signed up to testify, beginning at our host sites on Maui. Once all in-person testimony is gathered, we will take Zoom testimony. Please keep your testimony brief and on the subject to allow everyone the opportunity to testify. Each person providing testimony will be given three minutes. Please be aware that if you go beyond the three minutes, I will kindly ask you to conclude your testimony. We are recording this hearing to make a complete and accurate record of the proceedings, so please state your full name before giving your testimony. Make sure to speak clearly so we accurately record your testimony for the record. Please turn off the live YouTube stream of this hearing while testifying, as it will cause an echo. Please remember to respect the opinions of all testifiers and that this hearing is not an opportunity for accusations or rebuttals. There may be differing opinions. Everyone will have an opportunity to voice their opinion for the department to consider. All testimony should be directed to me, not to the audience. Once again, please note that this hearing is simultaneously being streamed on YouTube. The livestream will be recorded and preserved on YouTube as a matter of public record. Please be aware that by offering your oral testimony today, you're consenting to being audio-recorded and video-recorded if your camera is on. Let's begin with a short video on the background explaining the proposed administrative rules.
Proposed Adoption of Hawaii Administrative Rules, Chapter thirteen dash sixty point one-one, Kipahulu Community-Based Subsistence Fishing Area Maui. Overview of Proposed Rules. The purpose for the rules as described in Section One is to sustainably support the subsistence needs of the Kipahulu Moku community on the island of Maui through culturally-rooted, community-based management. Ensure the sustainability of near-shore ocean resources in the area through effective management practices including the establishment of limits on the harvest of marine life. Recognize and protect customary and traditional native Hawaiian fishing practices that are exercised for subsistence, cultural, and religious purposes in the area. Facilitate the substantive involvement of the community in resource management decisions for the area through dialogue with community residents and resource users. Establish the Opehe Rest Area to ensure stock health and to allow replenishment of this imported food resource. And establish the Kukui Bay Sanctuary for the preservation and protection of critical nursery habitat for numerous marine species, including species traditionally relied upon for subsistence. Section Two provides definitions for key terms found throughout the chapter. Section Three describes the boundaries of the CVSFA and its subzones. The Kipahulu CVSFA includes that portion of the southeast coast of the island of Maui consisting of allstate waters and submerged lands from Halepa Gulch in the west to Pua'aloo Gulch in the east, from the shoreline out to approximately sixty meters in depth. The boundaries of the Kipahulu CVSFA are described by western and eastern boundary lines, landward and seaward boundary lines, and five reference points, A, G, H, I, and J, identified by their latitude and longitude coordinates, which are included in this section of the rules. The boundaries of the Kukui Bay Sanctuary Subzone are shown in red on this map. The Kukui Bay Sanctuary includes allstate waters and submerged lands bounded by the shoreline boundary of the Kipahulu CVSFA from Puhilale Point in the west, indicated as Point B, to a point on the inside of Kukui Bay, indicated as Point D. A straight line from Point D to Submarine Point in the west, indicated as Point C, and a straight line from Submarine Point at Point C to Puhilale Point and Point B. The boundaries of the Opehe Rest Area Subzone are shown in yellow. The Opehe Rest Area includes allstate waters and submerged lands within three hundred feet from the shoreline between an imaginary line that extends seaward, perpendicular from the shoreline indicated as Point E, to a point in the ocean indicated as Point EE. And an imaginary line that extends seaward, perpendicular from the shoreline indicated as Point F, to a point in the ocean indicated as Point FF. All reference points mentioned here are identified by their latitude and longitude coordinates, which are included in this section of the rules. Additionally, the map of these areas is found in the rules as Exhibit C, entitled "Map of the Kukui Bay Sanctuary and Opehe Rest Area," dated April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, located at the end of the chapter. Section Four describes the permitted and prohibited activities within the Kipahulu CVSFA. In addition to species and gear-specific restrictions, there will be an overall bag limit of ten finfish per person per day, with the exception that akule and introduced or invasive species do not count towards this bag limit. There will be no take of akule for commercial purposes, bag limits of one omilu per person per day, and two kala per person per day, and a five-inch minimum size for kole. Moi will have a closed season of May through September and a slot limit from eleven inches to eighteen inches in length, meaning the minimum size for moi is eleven inches and the maximum size is eighteen inches. There will be a bag limit of forty opehe of any species per person per day and a shell diameter slot limit of one and a quarter inches to two inches. Additionally, taking of any species of opehe will be prohibited within the Opehe Rest Area, and taking or possessing any species of opehe while diving will be prohibited. There will be a closed season for ula and ulapapapa from May through September and a combined bag limit of two per person per day. There will be a bag limit of two alakuma, or spotted reef crab, also known as seven-eleven crab, per person per day. And taking or possessing any native limu with holdfast or roots attached will be prohibited. For gear restrictions, surround net fishing will be prohibited with exceptions for taking akule and ta'ape using a gill net with a stretched mesh of two and three-quarter inches or greater. Bag net fishing will be prohibited. Possession or use of a throw net with a stretched mesh of less than three inches will be prohibited. And there will be a maximum of two fishing poles that a fisher is allowed to use at one time, provided that each pole has one line, no more than two hooks per line, and one point per hook, except that double and treble hooks are allowed when using fishing lures. The use of scuba when taking marine life will be prohibited except with a permit issued by the Department for Surround Net Fishing for akule and fishing for introduced or invasive species. Taking of marine life at night will be prohibited with night being defined as the time period beginning thirty minutes after sunset and ending thirty minutes before sunrise. And taking or possessing any marine life within the Kukui Bay Sanctuary will be prohibited. Section Five carves out an exception that allows fishers on a vessel who are in possession of prohibited gear or restricted species to traverse through the areas of the CVSFA, provided that the vessel remains in active transit the entire time, and no prohibited gear is in the water during the transit. Boats that are adrift, anchored, or moored are not considered to be in active transit. Section Six describes the applicable penalties for violations of the chapter. Section Seven describes the department's asset forfeiture authority, and Section Eight is a severability clause.
We have now reached the testimony portion of this public hearing. As a reminder, the address to the DAR YouTube channel is at the top of this slide, and the link to the livestream has also been pasted into the chat. So if you would just like to listen in to this hearing without providing testimony, you're welcome to log off this Zoom meeting and view the YouTube livestream of this hearing. You will be called upon by a member of the DAR staff when it is your turn to testify. We ask that all individuals attending virtually keep their microphones muted when not speaking. As I mentioned earlier, we will take testimony in the following order. First, we will take in-person testimony from people who have been signed up to testify at the in-person host site in Wailuku, Maui, and then at the in-person host site in Hana, Maui. And once all in-person testimony is gathered, we will take Zoom testimony. As a reminder, please keep your testimony to three minutes in order to ensure that everyone who signed up has a chance to give testimony. If there is extra time at the end of everyone on the list and you would like more time to testify, we will allow those who already spoke to give additional testimony. I will now stop sharing my screen so everyone providing testimony can be clearly seen. We'll first take any in-person testimony in Wailuku, Maui. Russell, are there any testifiers at the Maui office?
No, no one is here to testify, David. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will take in-person testimony in Hana, Maui. Adam, go ahead.
Thanks, David. First, we'd like to start. Our first testifier is Auntie Tweedy Lynn.
Good evening, board. My name is Tweedy Lynn. I am, my real name is Glenna Ann Rosalia Librando Lynn. I am a mother-in-law, a wife, but anyway, my guess, I'm gonna forget all that introduction. I'm gonna get to the point. My husband was a registered konahiki under the Kingdom of Hawaii, the State of Hawaii, registered in the Bureau. So he had the vision, he had the plan, and he had the spirit to put this all into what we're doing as the Ohana. So I'd like to pay tribute. My testimony, which is actually ours, was made by Uncle John Lynn, Uncle Mike Min, and myself as a witness, because I was the wife that tagged along with them. So I would like to read something that we had done since in the seventies and eighties, and I would like to share this with you to give you the spirit of how we really feel and who we are. So the first one that I'm going to do is called "The Spiritual Significance of Ka'uhiki." Ka'uhiki, the little light, is the guidance for man. He was known as the master of man, whose tongue lashed out and spoke with authority. He was sent by his father with Noinoi as his mate, and Keanini, his brother, to create perfect man. But Noinoi had an affair with Keanini, which was forbidden in Ka'uhiki's kingdom. And to be with Noinoi forever, he changed her into the light, Mister Rain. He changed Keanini into the wreath in Hana Bay and himself into the Great Hill. That Great Hill became a great fortress and battlefield whenever family members wanted to rule Maui. Looking at Ka'uhiki, we can see his head draped in his glorious clump and see the features of his face to remind man of his image and likeness to God, man's creator. Today, Ka'uhiki is known as Hana, work for life, which attracts many people from all over the world. We love our aina so very dearly that the members of the Hana Canoe Club named their canoes Ka'uhiki and Keanini and colored them black and white, because that is the original colors, Hana. Whether we are black or white, we all come from the same God. Today, we, the young modern Hawaiians, have found a leadway to the Father through working harmoniously with each other on the land and recognizing the spiritual significance of the land. Thus far, we have established a Hawaiian lifestyle that will enable all to gain self-sufficiency and to maintain a balance with nature and the aina. Aloha, no. The second is an interpretation of the aina, the land. In a highly structured religious society such as Hawaii was before discovery, every human action carried with it and implied, if not explicit, explicit spiritual connotation. Whether fishing, farming, hunting, and dancing, singing, the Hawaiian had to be in spiritual sync with the forces that controlled his every living, very living. The land and the ocean along with the forces that make the land prosper and the ocean bountiful, the rain, the sun, the moon, the wind, the stars, et cetera. In those days before Saipu and Longstraw, a Hawaiian had to be a part of the land and the water to merely survive. It is not hard then to reason that the Hawaiians come from the taro, which in turn comes from the land and the water. To a Hawaiian then, he was the land, and the land was, he was the land, and the land was him. If he was in spiritual sync with the aina, then the taro prospered, and so did he. In one prevalent way that the Hawaiians sought to grasp and understand that often elusive spirituality of his land was to give human or animate attributes to the land. We see it in countless Hawaiian legends of spiritual significance, like the legend of Ka'uhiki, and we see it in the names of places that have survived in spite of, and sometimes because of the Hawaii Digital Bureau. In the case of Maui, okay, yeah, go ahead, that one's mine. In the case of Maui, that's the Big Mac. It is not difficult to see that she is a woman with lahaina her head, the west end representing her head, excuse me, with lahaina in the west end representing her head. Iao is her ear. Hoo'olai at Makena is her nipple. Manaua Nui in Taupo is her ureter. Kipahulu is her vagina. Wa'ohi in Kawali is her water bag, and Keanai, her verteroposteria. Going further, we can see Maui's baby, Kahoolavi. Just separated from her mother by Molokini, her placenta all awash and connected spiritually and physically by the great winds of the Aleinui Ha'ha. Going further still, it isn't hard to describe the big island of Hawaii as Maui's mate and the father of Kahoolavi. In fact, at Opolo Point in the big island, the nearest point to Maui, there is a he'ial, a temple called Mookini, whose penis attraction, whose sexual attraction is a penis stone which faces directly to Kipahulu's Maui's lush pubic mound, connecting spiritually at Kanikawila he'ial in Kipahulu. Of course, this is a very superficial and cursory treatment of the study that requires much more research and understanding by modern Hawaiians before we can reach the spiritual harmony with each other and the aina. Aloha, aina then, is not just an idle slogan, but a simple way of describing a complete spiritual, physical relationship between the Hawaiian and his sustenance, the aina, and the taro which grows there. Therefore, those of us who are Nakeke or Ka'aina, whether Hawaiian, Chinese, Japanese, Filipino, Caucasian, or whatever, have a great stake in the ground that gives us life. In fact, the more a Hawaiian is cut off the land, he is that much less a Hawaiian. Perhaps we have to relearn the lessons of the land and the water, the vibe, before we can sing of the taro, man, and God, our creator. Aloha, no. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Auntie.
Next, we have Rick Rutiis.
Aloha, my name is Rick Rutiis. I landed in this place, Kipahulu, thirty-five years ago, a holy boy with his family, and a strange thing happened. I was hanaed by that community in Kipahulu. The uncles took me to the water, and they taught me how to dive, how to choose which fish, how to choose what was in season, what wasn't in season. Basically, they taught me how to live off the ocean and still have the ocean sustain itself. And this is something I'm very grateful for. Years later, I founded the nonprofit Makahanakatike, and I worked with the kids of Hana. And one of the things that we were able to do is we were able to monitor opehe for many years at Muolea and then Kipahulu, back and forth. Same week, we do a couple days in each one, and what we saw was in Muolea, which had been protected, we saw opehe's grandfathers, grandmothers, all over the place, healthy. And then when we went to Kipahulu, which was open to the public and at the campgrounds, we could barely find any one, and most of them were half-inch, inch, you know, they were very small. And we were able to see with our own eyes the difference between there. I've also been diving for thirty-five years now, and the fish that I used to see while diving with Uncle John and others were completely different than the fish we see now. It's crazy how much has changed, and it's not the families who are living in Kipahulu that are doing this change. It's outsiders coming in, taking as much as they can, not taking what they need, but taking as much as they can. And in Kipahulu, to my knowledge, everyone that I've talked to, there's no one who is not in favor of this happening. Thank you very much.
Mahalo.
Next, we have Heidi Leia. Make sure you guys state your guys' name, and if you guys are in support or opposition of the CVSFA, and then you guys say your testimony. Three minutes, three minutes.
Aloha, Kakao. Mahalo for considering the CVSFA for Kipahulu. Aloha Kakao, mahalo for um considering the CBSFA for Kipahulu. My name is Heidi Leia and I'm the executive director of the Honda Business Council and also a community liaison. With um with Ho'omau Ma'ukau Maui Hikina, which is East Maui Ready. Uh, our community's emergency preparedness leadership organization. Um, and I'm also working as a liaison with the Hawaii Farmers Union. To help put a food hub together for, for East Maui and. Like Rick mentioned, everyone in affiliation in the groups that um I've been working with. Especially for sustainability and looking at diversifying our economy towards more agriculture. And making sure our families are sustained, are in favor of the CBSFA. Um, so really on behalf of East Maui Ready. Ho'omau Ka'au Maui Hikina. Our community affiliation of residents and first responders engaged in emergency preparedness. I write this letter and I've submitted letters um. In support of the Kipahulu Walcreep Community Based Systems Fishing Area. This effort aligns and greatly supports the need for co-management of Hawaii's nearshore resources. By elevating indigenous community leadership and insight to inform decision-making. Um, in addition, in light of the Maui wildfire disaster of late. Empowering one another to be observant and protect our resources must be at the forefront of all of our actions. Um, as an active engaged resident of Hana. And I feel really fortunate to be able to um. Support efforts like this coming from the people, the lineal descendants that reside here. Kipahulu um Ohana has my full support in these efforts. And I urge the department to look favorably upon this application and move the administration rulemaking process forward expeditiously. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Next we have Uncle Irish.
Aloha, please go ahead, state your name and you can proceed with your testimony.
Aloha, my name is John Irish O'Hara. And I briefly submitted a memo to the committee to endorse uh. The Kipahulu Ohana from Ke'auali, Save the Hana Coast as the acting uh chairperson. Today I am here as a friend, a cousin and a resident of Hana. Representing my Ohana from Maka'ali, who are the Kalali, Kaikala and Kawi Maka'ole Ohana. We endorse and support, fully support of Kipahulu Ohana in their application for CBSFA. And we ask that you approve it. It's been way too long that this process has been going on. So long that my friend John is no longer here to be here and stand beside us and talk in front of you. But I know he is looking down upon us, continuing his. Efforts to complete this CBSFA. We cannot take more time in delaying this approval. It needs to be done. I know John and Tweedy as childhood friends growing up, uh spending time in Hana. And then when they moved to Wau, we met again and John returned to Hana. John, all of a sudden became involved with sovereignty in the native Hawaiian traditions and culture. Like I never knew he was a person to be like that. Uh, he spoke to me the way Tweedy talked about the Aina, how it becomes a person. And I had a hard time to understand what he was trying to say. He always told me to come home, Irish. You need to come home. The Aina is calling. They need help. And moreover, the time came, which I had not planned to do, but I returned to Hana. I became involved with Ke'auali, Save the Hana Coast. And one of the first things that I knew I had to do was to talk to my friend John. Ask him what is the right way to proceed. And talking to John and Tweedy, I asked the questions that I expected yes and no. They never gave me a yes or no answer. All they did was give me their mana'u. Their experiences, what they've learned, who they talked to, the stories that they heard. And then they told me, you need to make the decisions on your own. You need to do what is pono for the Aina, the Kai, the Ohana. It was hard to move with that type of direction, but then I understood. That they was not wanting to influence me on what actions I needed to do. They just gave me background information, gave me their thoughts and then I had to choose. On what I thought was pono. I always respected them for that because they never wanted to do, make the decision for me. It had to be done by myself. I'm sure the Kipahulu Ohana is well in hands with the absence of, therefore, John. Because he had been ingrained with the culture, the stories, the knowledge. The lifestyle of native Hawaiians, which was so important to him to be carried on. I know it is difficult for the state, but I think you guys understand. That the best people to manage or regulate a land is the community and the people that live on the land. Especially the people who have been there for many generations. They know the land more than anyone else. The scientists, all the documents that you can come up with will not give you the information that the people of the land have. And that's what is important with the CBSFA. It needs to be co-managed by the community. And the community will provide the right direction for the state and for people to follow. Ensuring that whatever they do in controlling and regulating the resources. That will be abundant and will be there for our. Children in the future so that they can see what our kukuna see and what we've seen. So it is important for the movie following that you approve the CBSFA. Mahalo Louis and mahalo Keku.
Mahalo.
Next we have Bill Furman.
Let's talk to this.
Yeah, without microphone.
I'm more contradicting Kipahulu guys, I don't know. I'm Bill Furman. I'm from Hana. Most guys in Hana think I only live or am from Hana. What I found out twenty years ago, my grandfather, as a small kid, was born in Kipahulu. The family had land in Kipahulu. All I know is about Uncle Tevi's place tonight are asking guys. What is the name of the place? And I gave a Japanese name and somebody else pointed out on the map. But yes, my family has land or had land out there. The twenty years ago, my auntie came to fight for a quiet title issue to claim the land back. She won the war and the lawyer took all the land and the money. So uh, we don't have anything left out there. But that's my roots that I didn't know about two, twenty years ago. I just knew my family originated in Hana back a couple centuries ago. I've been fighting different battles from Tweedy and John, more on union work, hotel work, political issues. And not paying much attention to what is going on here. But what I saw back twenty, thirty, forty years ago was this island was being inundated with development. All kind of people were coming in and we were forcing the locals in Wailuku and Kahalui and West Maui and South Maui. Off of their kulianas, off of their areas to fish and gather and to enjoy the ocean. And they are putting pressure now coming to Hana. And then we got the other people that don't even belong or whenever member, uh, people of these islands, immigrants. Who have a whole different mentality that the ocean is for them to fish when they like, to take the fish, go sell it. And disregard the kuliana and the responsibility of the locals who needed to survive. So I support this proposal. My only question is, how do we enforce it? You do not enforce rules with signage. Signage just advises you, don't do it. Somebody's gonna have to be on top of there. You see the people come in, night diving, doing all kind of illegal activities. And this has to be stopped. Hana has to be reserved for Hana. And hopefully our people, especially the ones in Kipahulu who need these resources to be there, not only for today. But for tomorrow and for the years to come, where many of us are no longer part of this world, but part of the ground. That our descendants have something to say, oh, at least my grandpa, my papa, my mommy. All help to make sure what was theirs is now ours. And I urge you to support this proposal. Thank you.
Mahalo.
Next we have um Noi Lecker.
Aloha, my name is uh Noi Lecker, born and raised here in East Maui. Um, my bloodline come from Ke'anai all the way uh to Ka'au. Uh, I am here today as a parent of five children and four grandchildren. Um, I have my last two kids here with me and I'm doing this for them, for their generation. And for the generation that is yet to come um from our um Hawaiian bloodline. Um, I am in full support of the um of the Kipahulu CBSFA. Um, I wanted to share a little bit about the honor. It was on June twenty-third um to hear and to read the many testimonies that touched the heart and brought a lot of tears. Um, when people came and talked in support of what um is taking place for Kipahulu. Um, the rules of conduct and so forth. Um, so I wanted to um just kind of bring us back to that first um meeting of the full support. And if you could see what we see outside here right now at Wananaguwa. The kekis are all running around outside because this is for them. We're doing, the parents, the grandparents are here, community people are here for, for them. Um, so today we come together to ask for your support to approve the adoption of Kipahulu SBSFA rules. Chapter thirteen dash sixty point eleven. I wanna mahalo all the board members for hearing the hearts of the people. I al- also wanna thank the community of East Maui and Kipahulu for coming out here tonight. To stand strong in unity as we continue to pass down the practice of our cultural values. From our kukuna to the next generation. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Um, we have Joseph here.
Aloha. My name is Joseph Daniel Ari Makali Ibirimo. Um, born and raised uh Ula'ino Patent, Hana Maui. And I support everything that's going on for Kipahulu and the perpetuation of Ma'ukatu Makai. And all of the ea in the Makai. I just wanted to remind everybody about the education that I've had in the past about the future farmers of America and so judging, vegetable judging and whatnot. Uh, everything that has to do with the ea has to do with the Ma'ukatu Makai. Vai vai of being able to have the water flow from the mountain to the ocean. And because of the Ula'ino Patent, it has to do with Kailua to Kakeenui area. Since early seventeen hundreds on Palapalasi Lenui. It's very important that all these mandates be regulated through the utmost respect. Like Ali'enui status of mentality and action, rather than just being spoken about. That's why I'm back in Hana after all the things and trials and tribulations of my life. I wanna be a part of this more than anything that I could ever imagine besides raising my children personally. And teaching them of the mana'u, pono, or io, yeshua kristo of Hana Maui. That I could never deny is far surpassed than anybody else that I've ever experienced so far in testimony, which I've heard. And been able to see for myself. That's all I have to say from me. Everybody call me Joey. Uh, aloha, aloha and mahalo kona and please respect the Aina. Because the Aina will give back as long as you give unto it. That's why I've been picking up so much opala lately because I cannot help but see it and want to get it up. But to be honest, it's the kuliana of those who leave it behind, mostly the malahini. And uh the kamaina that are here, visitors that have been able to purchase through illegal TMKs. Which are technically illegal if you look at the hui. And their ability to know that the kuliana depends on each individual according to their ability to be able to speak clearly and act upon what they speak. Be true to their word. And I wanna do that in perpetuation of action more than voice. Aloha, aloha.
Mahalo.
Um, next we have Alana, your cannon.
Aloha.
Aloha, I'm Alania Cannon, Maui Marine Program Manager for the Nature Conservancy. And mahalo for the opportunity to provide testimony today. TNC is steadfast in our support for Kipahulu Ohana's proposal to designate a CBSFA for their moku of Kipahulu. And it is truly an honor for our organization, for myself personally, to support their work. To uphold the traditions of their place and their people. TNC began working with Kipahulu Ohana in two thousand and ten to provide technical support for creating a Makai Resource Management Plan. Later called their Malama Ike Kai Plan. This is where the community identified a CBSFA for Kipahulu Moku as a priority action. One of TNC's roles in supporting Kipahulu Ohana's pursuit of a CBSFA. Has been to provide another scientific perspective to understand the status of resources prior to proposed management. And we will continue to offer our support in years following designation. In our written testimony, we share relevant findings from Opehi Rest Area Studies, Reef and Reef Fish Surveys. And analysis of the Pukueve Sanctuary and Human Use and Creole Surveys, all of which support this designation. To highlight one finding from the Creole Survey. The people of Kipahulu and East Maui heavily depend on marine resources for subsistence practices and their way of life. Creole survey interviews showed eighty-one percent of fish caught remained in East Maui. And over half are used for home consumption and community events. Reinforcing that the selection of a CBSFA subsistence is appropriate for fisheries management in Kipahulu. Kipahulu has relatively good fish biomass and the community wants to keep it that way through proactive management. Without appropriate rules and regulations in place, Kipahulu could face rapid and significant declines. They have shown they are an important ally to the Department of Natural Resources. They've worked, um, they've shown that they work well with Division of Aquatic Resources and Division of Conservation and Resource Enforcement. To ensure that our marine resources are managed sustainably. And that benefits of food, shoreline protection, recreation and cultural values will be available today and for future generations. We respectfully and strongly reiterate our support for this designation as proposed by the community and mahalo for your time.
Mahalo.
Next we have Tate Kiliho Malu.
Aloha, my name is Tate Kiliho Malu. I'm the coordinator for Maui Nui Makai Network. And the network strongly supports the Kipahulu Ohana's proposal to designate a community-based subsistence fishing area. In two thousand and fourteen, Kipahulu Ohana became one of the founding members of the network. And the network is a group of nine and growing community groups across Maui Nui focused on Ma'ukatu Makai connectivity. However, they've been leading their own communities since nineteen ninety-five in native Hawaiian case-based co-management. Their proposal is shaped by generational ike or na. Their proposal is shaped by generational ike or knowledge, Hawaiian traditional and customary management and subsistence practices of this place and its resources, gathered from people at community meetings, individual and family interviews, along with talk story sessions. Their CBSFA proposal is a guide for pono and sustainable fishing practices to restore abundance to Kipuhulu reefs and nearshore waters. Their CBSFA proposal stems from decades of work and kilo or observation over time, seeing the growth and lack thereof in Kipuhulu. There is no one better to manage Kipuhulu in partnership with the state than the community. After all, it is in the name of this designation, a community-based subsistence fishing area. Kipuhulu has genealogical ties, um, Kipuhulu Ohana has genealogical ties to Kipuhulu aina. So allow them to ho'omalu to protect Kipuhulu and its resources for the generations to come. And enclosing Maui Nui Makai Network strongly, uh, supports Kipuhulu and their proposal of a community-based subsistence fishing area. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Scott Crawford.
Aloha.
Aloha, uh, my name is Scott Crawford and, um, I'm just here as, uh, today as an individual, a community member to express my support for the Kipuhulu Moku CBSFA designation. I'm, uh, the, the former executive director of Kipuhulu Ohana, so I've worked in that role. I, I worked on this proposal for, for many years and I'm very happy to see it finally come to this point today where we can have a public hearing and bring the, um, proposal to the board, um, for, for designation and um, I, I have just seen how much hard work has gone into this by so many different people, fishers and practitioners and, um, supporters as well as, um, uh, other communities and the agencies and, um, so the main thing that I wanna say is that Kipuhulu is ready. Kipuhulu is ready to move from, uh, a CBSFA proposal to having a designation in place and moving into an active co-management relationship with DLNR, DAR and DO Care, and being able to implement the management plan, that's part of the CBSFA proposal, and, um, move forward towards protecting the resources and keeping the subsistence lifestyle of Kipuhulu, uh, perpetuated for many generations. And I also just wanna say mahalo to, um, all the other communities that have led the way and provided inspiration and support. Um, Ha'ena, Mo'omomi, Milali'i and all the other communities that are out there in their own places and they're in their own ways, working, um, working to Malama their, their, um, their aina and their Kai. And, um, if each place in their own area takes care, then that adds up to, um, you know, effective governance and effective stewardship, um, that we need to make our islands, uh, sustainable and, um, and, and be able to, um, just keep living into the future. So to all those communities that have provided support along the way and are, 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 along this journey with Kipuhulu, um, mahalo. And to everyone in Kipuhulu's whose work to bring this forward and, and provide an inspiration for other communities and example and a model, mahalo. And, uh, so please support the CBSFA designation and, uh, um, look forward to the being able to work on the implementation of the management plan and, and, uh, making this, making this real after all this time. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
We have Lehu Apar.
Aloha. Yeah, how come you guys don't like put on you guys camera? No, not this evening. Everybody stay in their pajamas. Um, right? Put on you guys camera. We like to see you guys pearly teeths. Anyway, aloha. My name is Lehuwa. Um, it's a privilege and an honor to see, I don't know if you guys can see all our kupuna, but I go and shift a little bit, okay? Hi, everyone that put it on the camera, but you see that beautiful picture behind me? Yeah. That's the legacy. And the people that come through here with the continual laughs and the conversations that everyone aren't able to see, that's the legacy that they're leaving. Unfortunately, we get this opportunity to, to get together by Zoom um, and to be a part of something that they planted the seed and making sure that contamination doesn't water it. Instead, the life of vahy, like these moments that we get to nurture it in a way that it continues. Um, I'm a mom of six and I don't have grandchildren yet and I'm okay to wait, kids. But I speak on behalf of these generations that is yet to be born. And I believe that the gen- that the legacy behind me, um, has also felt that way. I support what they have fought hard and longed for. I support the different islands that have fought and sup- and moved mountains and has placed sweat and time away from their families so that this legacy can continue. And I have no doubt that the board will agree to making sure that the people of the vahy would know what best, what is best for that vahy. Additionally, I live in Kuali. Um, and unfortunately, even though we get the privilege to live in this beautiful space, we also get responsibility to see actions that we shouldn't see. And one, one of the reasons why I support this is because at one AM in the morning or two AM in the morning, we see boats coming in and they're parking their boats and there, there's divers with tanks and, and lights just going across this coastline, diving in an hour with tools that, that is being misused. With tools that is abusing the coastline of the legacy that they have fought hot, hard for. Um, and so with this opportunity to speaking on behalf of a generation that have yet to be born, I have no doubt that this board will come into agreement, but more so, I believe this board will also allow the people of the districts to create what is best for their place. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Next, we have Terry George.
Aloha, Mai Kako. Uh, my name is Terry George and, um, I live in Kaimuki in the Konamoku of Oahu. I also work, um, in, uh, the Moku of Ko'ola Poko in Kailua, Ahupua'a, uh, in Ma'akati Wili, where I lead the Hero Kale Castle Foundation, which has been a strong partner for, um, Kipuhulu Ohana and the many other organizations that have supported this sort of work throughout the islands. The reason we believe so much, can believe that longtime fishing families who talked about that are the best placed people to sort of figure out how to lead us back into and the kind of care and knowledge that, um, the Konohiki of old have and the Konohiki of today have if they're allowed to partner with the state and really bring forward, uh, abundance. So we're in strong support of, um, this, um, rules package. And then personally, I just wanna share a moment that really scared me. I am privileged to be married to a very popular teacher, uh, in elementary school and, um, often get invited to her students' graduation parties from high school. And we went to one in Kaka'ako. There were like a hundred people. And the graduate so proudly announced that they had bought twelve pounds of Opihi, um, for everyone to enjoy. And my wife knows I love Opihi. She brought me over, said, eat, eat. And I said, I can't do it because I can't believe that that much Opihi was, was taken. And what if it had been harvested right here in Kipuhulu, in this coastline? So this rules package is designed to make sure that we are careful in stewarding our resources. And there's not just rules about it, but there's values and there's education. So the next generation and those like me who are not born here can really learn the proper way to be in this place and to, um, exude kuliana. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. And I'm just in awe of the community-based process that the Kipuhulu community has, uh, has led, uh, that has led us to this point. Next community shouldn't have to take thirteen years to get this done. Let's see what we can do to accelerate this process. Mahalo very much.
Mahalo.
Next is Uncle Greg Lynn.
Aloha.
Aloha. My name is Greg Lynn and I'm a lineal descendant of Hana. I'm a lifetime fisherman up to every day. Fishing today, it is very, it is very obvious to see that our resources are diminishing. Two days wait fishing at Uku'au, it was like defending. And today, she's like ninety-five questions, I'm coming home with nothing. Moku CBSFA. And I know with your concern, resources, we can make great changes in our resources. Mahalo. No.
Mahalo.
How's the, um, the connection, David? Is it okay? Is it, um, glitchy or?
Right now it's okay. Um, it was slow for a little bit.
Okay. It is just kind of going in waves. We'll, we'll keep going this way. And if, if the video has to come off, then just let me know. Text me, okay?
Okay.
Um, next is Yuko Shinoda.
Aloha, Kako. Uh, my name is Yuko Shinoda Gappni. I moved to Hana nineteen ninety-seven and, um, nineteen ninety-eight, Kipuhulu Ohana and UH Hawaii had an opportunity to bring, uh, ten Japanese university student to Kipuhulu Ohana. And I was lucky, um, be able to do translate for them. And that was a very first connection with, um, Kipuhulu Ohana. And, um, that was also very first connection with native Hawaiian family. Um, Uncle John and Auntie Tweedy taught us so much of the Hawaiian true culture, um, gathering and making poi, fishing. Um, it touched us so deep, so deep. So I strongly support, um, this proposal because, um, now I live in Kipuhulu, uh, raising two boys and for Hawaiian cultures, such um, uh, cultural food, um, and fish. And I, I like to, um, support strongly. Aloha.
Mahalo.
Next is, um, Moani Ayona.
Auhea okoe na'aku'a na'umaku'a oia vahine. Auhea okoe nakupuna namaku'a onahonoa opi'ilani. Auhea okoe namamo okaua lani ha'a ha'a. Nakama oka makani ka ili aloha'e. Velina mai meki aloha. Healiika aina, hekaua kekanaka. The land is the chief, the people are the servants. This olelo no'ao of our kupuna encapsulates the lifetime generational work of Kipuhulu Ohana in educating and being a champion for ensuring land and ocean access and subsistence-based living in East Maui. Aloha, my name is Moani. School counselor at Hana School. I have been fortunate to grow up here in a time of abundance, when our kupuna were still here living a subsistence-based lifestyle. I have three children and two grandchildren who will also live in Hana for generations to come. I was raised by, by what some would call radicals. It's true. My dad, Mike Min, Uncle John Lynn, Auntie Tweedy Lynn, Uncle Parli Kanako'ole, Uncle Eric Kanako'ole, and many, many others were and are radicals. Hawaiians who fought to ensure our generation had access to land. Sounds so simple, yeah? But when you're up against rich land grabbers and the federal government, you have to be radical. You know what else is radical? Hawaiians living on their ancestral lands with access to the ocean to feed their families, caring for waterways that flow from Ma'akatu Makai so keiki can then learn to feed themselves and their families with what the ocean provides. Radical is the fact that before the fight against climate change was even a thing, they were, they were opposing the desecration of our land and sea from development, bombings and taking of water. Finally, being radical means fiercely protecting this way of life because there is no alternative. This is it. Kipuhulu Ohana's thirteen-plus year work in seeking designation of the Kipuhulu Moku CBSFA is just that, a radical idea that is actually not, if you put it, of Hawaii and Hawaiians. Not the Western context that we're so used to of greed and money, of ownership and individualism, but the idea that the people of a place have the most investment in that area and can manage the area with the knowledge of their ancestors to ensure survival. When the alternative was done in other places, it failed. We have enough data to show that without Hawaiians managing resources that we depend on for survival, the ahupua'a is lost, lost to tourists, lost to gated second homes, lost forever. I strongly support this plan and all it encompasses, the rules, the designations as proposed. Mahalo, Nui.
Mahalo.
Um, David, once again to reinstate, um, to say your name again, that was Moani Ayona. Uh, next, we will have Koi Kanako'ole. How's the, um, is it still lagging or is it okay?
It goes in and out, so maybe, um, have them come up and introduce themselves so we can see them and then they can turn off the video.
Okay, that sounds good. So what we're gonna do, because the internet's kind of lagging, so when we, we go in front, you guys can introduce yourselves, everybody can see you. And then when you're ready for testimony, we can just turn the video off. If that's okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Aloha.
Aloha. Velina mai meki aloha. My name is Kanako'ole.
Please go ahead.
I am the executive director of Ala Kukui, a community-based nonprofit retreat center here in Hana. But more, more appropriately for the purpose of this meeting, I am a lineal descendant of Kahele and Sentaro Ishi of Kipuhulu Maui. Kahele was born in Nu'u and raised in Kipuhulu where she married Sentaro Ishi, Ganemono, immigrant from Japan. One of seven siblings, she lived in Alaiki, Kipuhulu, and was the Kahu Mano in the waters of Ma'akati Wili. Her understanding of the reciprocal relationship between Kanaka and aina and Kanaka and Kai is why I am here to bring voice to that wisdom of place. I submit this testimony in strong support of establishing rules for a community-based subsistence fishing area in Kipuhulu Maui. Led by Kipuhulu Ohana, the Kipuhulu community has worked for over ten years to create the proposed rules and management plan to sustainably support their subsistence needs through culturally rooted and community-based stewardship. This effort has engaged many stakeholders. And it is because of this heavy lift that we, that they have the support of the community and organizations like Ala Kukui. that we, that they have the support of the community and organizations like Ala Kukui. Kipahulu Ohana is a well-established and respected organization with over twenty years of experience conducting projects for ahupua'a management. Kipahulu Moku is under threat from various influences, including over and improper harvesting of marine sources. Elevating indigenous community leadership and insight will ensure the best long-term results. Please allow the Kipahulu community to reach the critical next step in this long process. Approve the administrative rules needed to establish this CBSFA. In the early eighties, my father, Parley Kanakoole, worked with Uncle John, Auntie Tweedy, and Uncle Mike Min. In a grassroots aina-based group, they called Po Ha'ku. Although many have left us, nearly fifty years later, the spark they ignited, the kuliana they chose to awamo, it brings us here. So we honor them and raise our voice and turn our hand to the earth to continue the work. Eola. Eo. Eha.
Eha.
Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next, we have Billy Kinney. You just um state your name and then um shut them off.
Uh aloha, my name is Billy Kinney. Um born and raised in Hana'le and Haina on Kauai. Um I was raised by paniolos, um fishermen, um matriarchs, all of my, my, my Ohana on, on Kauai. But I'm testifying on behalf of the Haina community and the Hui Makainana Omakana. Um many of the uncles and aunties who have fought for generations, for, for decades, maybe a generation of, for decades to establish the first CBSFA in Haina. Um and the first rules package and management plan to be established and approved. Um uh simply put, you know, the, the impoverished communities of the powerless Hawaiians is not a place or a people, it's a, it's a project, yeah, and that we've been fighting against for many, 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 many lifetimes. While the, while the movement of these Kipuka communities to assume their roles um and their kuliana to managing resources is much older than I am. Um I'm very privileged to live in a time where those same communities are now living their kuliana through expressing their political autonomy, their autonomy, their agency and, and their authority. Um I'm privileged to be in the same generation as Kane and Piccolo, um two of the, the faces that lead this movement in Kipahulu. Uh privileged to know this Auntie, Auntie Tweedy and Uncle John and the many uncles and aunties who are working very hard here to, to push this CBSFA forward. Uh communities like Mo'omomi, Kipahulu, Miloli'i, and Haina are just some of the places where we hear these lineal descendant voices, these local voices, fighting back against this notion that these pu'aina communities don't know nothing. Um that we, that pu'aina is synonymous with rural, poor, or slow. We're only rural because, because we don't want to be urban. We, we, being dense is not for us. We're not poor, we just, we just distribute our wealth really well. And we're not, we're not slow, we just move and we act with intention. In Haina, the efficacy of the management plan and the rules package is still being assessed. Yes, fish biomass is rebounding, education and compliance is increasing, but the biggest tool and the biggest, well, the biggest success is really in the ongoing management of, and management objectives and activities that is really uplifting traditional and customary practice. Specifically, the practices of these lineal descendants as co-managers. Uh to close, I would say, I would like to say, um thank you to um all those on the DLNR and and all of their um, the compatriots and all of the people who have helped all of these communities um get to this place where we're at now, which is um we are empowered. Um across the, across Hawaii, there are two tools that are beginning, give, being, being established in these communities. One is um they're giving the lineal descendants the ability to co-manage, which is really, really important. Two, they're allowed the space to figure out what adaptive management is. And, and I implore you folks um to continue to support the CBSFA communities. Um support and approve and, and keep on um, keep on supporting uh Kipahulu Ohana. And I implore you to um in, employ, in, empower this community here. Uh mahalo.
Mahalo.
Next, we have Nigel Rosette.
Aloha Kakao. Uh my name is Nigel Rosette. I live in Wahihua, on the island of Wau, but my family is from uh Makua'au Pukalani side of this island. Um I stand on our testimony as a planner from Puakua'a in Oluawamo in strong support of Kipahulu and the CBSFA package that they present. Um kind of underlining and reiterating the importance and the experience that these communities have. I wish you guys were here to see the amount of kids, the amount of uh elders, kupuna that are here, and just that experience in um generationally caring about this place is so humbling and so empowering and makes me feel good, and I wish all you guys could feel uh what it feels like to be here and um to be close to this important, important uh work. Um again, really urge you to make this happen and uh continue to support CBSFAs across the state. Um mainly uh for the kupuna and for the Kiki, uh cause us is Makua. Um we're kind of in this in-between, but to make sure that uh the Kiki have the access to the fish and have access to these lifestyles is, is so important and um mahalo, mahalo everybody here and mahalo for your time. Aloha.
Mahalo.
Next, we have um Manuel Mejia.
Aloha.
Aloha Kakao. I am Manuel Mejia, Hawaii Director for the Coral Reef Alliance. Mahalo for letting me express my strong support of Kipahulu Ohana and their pursuit of the Kipahulu Moku CBSFA designation. I first worked with the Pono Fishers of Kipahulu back in two thousand and seven with my colleagues at the Nature Conservancy. Even prior to then, Kipahulu Ohana had already a very clear vision of how to bring back the abundance of marine resources so that their community can thrive. Rather than focusing on prohibitions, they focused positively on the abundance of what marine resources they wanted to see more of. Through their vision of flourishing abundance, more fish, more limu, and more opihi, I have seen the Kipahulu Ohana community come together around protecting the natural and cultural resources of Kipahulu Moku's coastline, which has inspired other communities in Hawaii and across the Pacific to do the same. It is truly rare to find a strong sense of kuliana and leadership with aloha together, and this community has worked very hard to get this, to get to this stage. It has been a long journey for them, and they have come a long way in further refining their stewardship plans in a very collaborative spirit and in close and respectful consultation with the DLNR through DAR Maui. The only thing they need now is the strong unequivocal support of DLNR to recognize their good work via the CBSFA designation, and in doing so, fulfill its mandate in protecting natural resources and reaffirm and protect traditions and customary practices for subsistence and culture. Kipahulu Ohana has diligently worked through their internal processes within their community and have collaboratively engaged with DLNR and with the public in a fair, transparent, and open public outreach over the years. The Kipahulu community is a cultural Kipuka, as they have always generously shared their fishing knowledge and aloha aina values with other communities across Hawaii and the wider Pacific. One of the beloved and revered kupuna in Hawaii, the late Uncle John Lynn, mentored so many stewards of the land and sea that it is clear from his legacy that the true wealth of any community is its relationship with place and its ability to care for one another. The reason that Kipahulu Ohana is pursuing their CBSFA designation is so that this vital and reciprocal relationship between people and the place that feeds them can continue. In essence, perpetuating the well-being of Hawaii's people and protecting the culture and values of Malama'aina. The CBSFA designation was designed specifically to protect places like Kipahulu. It is an honor to support Kipahulu Ohana for their CBSFA designation. Mahalo for your leadership and doing the right thing for Hawaii. Aloha.
Mahalo.
Next, we have Layla Ko'uku.
Aloha Kakao. I'm Layla Ko'uku from Miloli'i on the Konahama side of the Big Island. Um aloha Kakao and mahalo anuilo alakako'nu Kipahulu ma for the invitation and to Dar in allowing me to be here with you all this evening. My presence here today is yes, a lineal descendant, an outreach and monitoring coordinator, and a Mo'halana Konahiki apprentice of Miloli'i and the Miloli'i CBSFA. But like I mentioned, it came as an invitation, representing and standing side by side with the Kipahulu Ohana as we all kokua in the holomoa of the Kipahulu Community Base Subsistence Fishing Area. Who better to voice the teachings of kupuna past and present of their vahii? Who better to protect their resources, educate, and reciprocate the aloha and values of their practices in and of the space of their very own upbringing? Who better to bring forth a rule package meant specifically for the aina of Kipahulu, some distance from the nearest store? But who better to konahiki, steward, manage, and speak of their place, Kipahulu? For those, the Malahini, visitors, you, even me, it's our kuliana to learn of these spaces, respect it, the people of these spaces, their way of life, their way of living, their icebox of Ma'aka to Makai, their home. Haina, Miloli'i, and Kipahulu. We are of the old ways, adapting and keeping the flames of our ancestors well lit, following breadcrumbs, or lessons, should I say, left by them such as ikavama'ua, kavama'ope. Look to the past to guide us into the future, being one of the many guiding light principles of our Kanaka Nation. We adhere to these lessons, we listen, and we learn of these values, we not ask why. As the generations cycle through, this is what we look to and where we now stand. In a time where kupuna of mine who have since passed would tell me, you go bebe, you go tell them. So just doing what I'm told, without hesitation, without question, leading to another lesson. Not ask why, just do. Here I am, reiterating the voices of my kupuna and my Kiki, mind you. Not hesitate, just do. So to you Dar, from my kupuna to you, not hesitate, just push it through. And to follow for BLNR, not hesitate, just pass it. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Next, we have Uilani Naipo.
Aloha.
Aloha my Kakao. Ova'no Uilani Naipo, lineal descendant of Miloli'i. Kapaliloa Konahama Makomoku'ke ave. Mahalo nuu for um for making time and um allowing me to provide testimony Dar. Um you guys are doing a great job. I really appreciate you accommodating, coming out to um to the, the people of place, coming to us, and um it is such a great honor to be hosted by the Ohana of Kipahulu. Um and, and to be welcomed here as we come for it. My, my pelina with Kipahulu has to um is with the people of the place and the work that we both do. As a CBSFA um program administrator for Miloli'i, um we know that the work is, is long and it's hard. Um but what we both have in common is we are the people of place. And we're talking about the places that we're working for, the place that raises us, that feeds us. And now it's our turn to Malama. And it's not to Malama for today and for our Kiki, but to Malama for the many generations and our great-great-grandchildren that we haven't met yet. And so it's within that, um again, the kuliana falls uh onto us, the people of place, and we need to honor that. So whether pelina started from when we were young and playing near the, near shore and not knowing how to swim yet, but playing right next to the paku'upi'upi' of our actual bay that we, we learned to swim at. Um or maybe it was a little boy who, who is a tale of his father on his journey to become that Kai boy, the Bay boy. Now we find ourselves in front of you asserting a right to Malama'aina. And this is really honor, eh, from a Hawaiian perspective, our kuliana is not something we, we actually beg for. We don't need that recognition. That's something we don't do, because even the kuliana that we, we, we hold and we cherish and it's our honor, is something that can get taken away if we do that. But we're here before you, because this is the process we need to go through. And so I re- reiterate, much in the same framework that we once were, we just went through this, you know, two, three years ago. Please let the people of the place determine what's best. Um they're feeding their families, and they're feeding the, the great-grandchildren that they haven't met. You know, um he kaua'ua lino ma'ku. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Uh next, we have Kai Manna.
Aloha. My name is Kai Manna Crokawa. I'm seventeen, and I've grown up my whole life fishing and diving in Kipahulu and Hana. And I think that the DLN, this is an important step for the DLNR to accept because this is our way of life and without the fish and our food from the aina, we have nothing. This is what we live off of. And so these are the rules that the people of Kipahulu have come together and pushed forward. So I am asking for you guys to please accept this, so that we can continue our way of life for now and for the future generations to come.
Mahalo.
Next, we have Kamalani Paukua.
Aloha. I'm Kamalani Paukua here to Kakao Kipahulu Moku, um Kipahulu Ohana.
Um no, 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 you was on.
Okay.
I just said turn off the camera.
Um subsistence fishing played a vital imperative, monumentous role in the survival and well-being of small villages throughout the pai'aina. Like you've heard um throughout the evening, stories by our community of ike kukuna, place-based knowledge and its importance to our cultural heritage and survival. The CBSFA is about cultural identity in my eyes. It's a foundation for the following East Maui Moku, Hana Ko'olau, who use the proposed rules as stepping stones to Malama and caring for their moku. Fishing techniques passed down through generations connect communities with their ancestors and reinforce a sense of belonging. In many cases, these villages lack alternative employment opportunities due to such remote locations and limited resources. By relying on subsistence fishing, villagers can sustain and maintain the pu'aina or backcountry way of life. Food security, preservation, generational wisdom, sustainable practices
Way of life um was passed down, is being passed down and will be passed down for many more years to come. Therefore, this Ike Kupuna thrives in Kipuhulu. Furthermore, while rich in history, culture, and resources, Kipuhulumoku is under threat from various influences that include overharvesting and improper harvesting of marine resources. It is imperative that the Kipuhu- that Kipuhulu receive support for the co-management of these resources. The approval of this, of the administrative rules required to establish their much-needed community-based subsistence fishing area will elevate indigenous community leadership. And therefore, that insight, that Ike Kupuna to inform decision-making moving forward. This approval is critical for the longevity of resource sustenance in the Kipuhulumoku through stewardship and cultural sustainability. Maipua alu'u'a i kalepa o Kipuhulu. O Kipuhuluka'aina o kamakanika'ilia aloha. E'ola aloha. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Next, we have Sam Akoi.
Aloha, aloha Kakao. Um, Kamauela Akoi the fourth. Um, I reside in Kipuhulu. Um, I, I am in full support of the CBSFA. Yeah, I'm kind of getting kind of emotional right now. You know, I want to thank, thank you folks, you know, to, to for be doing this and working with Kipuhulu um, community. Um, we're practitioners, you know, we've been Kia'edis our resources for, for a long time. And we, you know, would you guys supporting this CBSFA would give us the opportunity to rest now. You know, I haven't been diving that side or making opes, you know, for maybe ten years. You know, I've been going to other places and not even eating opes, but you know, um, supporting the CBSFA would just take us to the next level in um, in Kia'i this, this um, um, the destruction that is happening, you know, it's our own family that's coming in. You know, and how are we gonna do, you know, keep it porno between us? You know, so we don't say nothing, you know, but now, you know, as, as you folks come and, and help us, alakai and steward, you know, uh, work hand in hand with us and steward the, the, our ea, you know, our resources, you know, from the mountain to the ocean. Um, yeah, we keep them nice and short. Um, thank you guys again. Thank you for Kipuhulu, Hana. Thank you for all the testimonies. It's been unbelievable. You know, the testimonies that have been said today. Uh, please, you know, support CBSFA and um, and Holomo. Thank you very much. Aloha.
Mahalo.
Next, we have Auntie Claudia. Aloha. She, she's coming.
Aloha Chair Dawn and the rest of the building, our members, Dar, everyone who's in this name. Um, mahalo for taking the time to finally be here in Hana or at least give Hana a chance to uh, voice their opinions and their public opinion, of course. Oh, my name is Claudia Kalahola. And um, I'm a lineal descendant of Heva Heva Wau, Kahoa'a and Kanaka Kandami. I was born and raised in Hana. And for the last thirty-plus years, I've worked as a cultural practitioner and Valama'a Ina advocate for Hana and all of Maui Hikina. I sit on a board for the nonprofit Nomomomolea, a sister company of Kipuhulu and a founding member of the Maui Nima'kai Network. For years, our organizations have worked hard hand in hand with Kipuhulu and the Ohana. Through their years of hard work and persistence, as a community, we have all gained much and have much to mahalo him for. Our support as an organization has been submitted several times over in the past years as Kipuhulu began this journey more than ten years ago. I remember Greg and Eunice going door to door getting signatures on their petition. And I remember all the years of Malama'ikai learning workshops and outreach efforts. And the memory that touches our heart is the memory of Uncle John's passing. And that we miss his presence tonight. After all these years, finally, a public hearing. And yet he's not here. But here in spirit, for sure. Tonight, I'm here as an individual to testify and to lend my support. As a Kanaka Maoli born and raised here in our Kula'ivo of Maui Hikina. I'm an individual that grew, grew up having to forage and gather for subsistence. We didn't have money to go to the store every day. It depended on, on us to go, to go to the ocean, to go to the mountain. I'm here as a kupuna Lava'ea who at age five, along with my siblings, were diving, hooking fish, fixing manini houses, cleaning limu, ko'e and opihi, and gathering not only to feed our own family, but the kupuna that we grew up with. This has been a lifetime's journey and a way of life. I'm also here as someone who has seen and who sees the firsthand decline of resources from when we grew up until now. I support this CBSFA with Kipuhulu Ohana because if not this, what? And if not Kipuhulu, who? The leadership of the Ohana grew up into this kuliana. They were destined to do this. They have the commitment and they have the capacity to do this. Give them this opportunity to fulfill the dream, not only their dreams, but the dreams of their dad and their uncles. Just their process alone of trying to pursue the CBSFA designation has inspired other communities in Maui Hikina. You know, people are feeling, if Kipuhulu can, we can too. So imagine, just imagine what can happen if you folks pass the CBSFA. And so I ask you, why not? Why not now? Please, let's be on the right side of history. And let the people use this process, this CBSA process that was specifically created so that our resources could be taken care of, not only with the science, but with traditional knowledge, with Ike Kupuna, with Ike Hawaii. Give them the opportunity to do this. After all, you folks made this designation possible. Why create a CBSA, CBSFA opportunity if you guys not gonna grant it? We have people in a community, again, like I said, that have the commitment and have the capacity to do it. Let them do it. Let them pair science and traditional knowledge to malama their resources. To malama their mo'o'olelo. To malama Ike Kupuna for seven generations forward. So that we, as a people, can have more than enough to feed our families. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Um, our final um, testifier here is Koiki Lin.
Aloha.
Aloha. Uh, my name is Koiki Lin and I'm in support of the CBSFA for the Kipuhulumoku. Um, my testimony, um, I'll start right now. Um, the previous slow pace of understanding and rec- and recognition of the need to preserve indigenous practices may have just received a boost with the recent announcement from the Department of Interior recognizing co-management of federal parks with tribal entities. As National Park Service Director Chuck Sands pointed out, through increasing collaborative engagement with tribes, Alaska Native entities, and native Hawaiian community will make better land management decisions, acknowledge and hopefully heal some deep wounds, benefit from traditional econo- ecological knowledge, and better interpret the history of the lands, re-administer, and all the plants and animals that live in them. I would like to remind everybody, the national park is the biggest landowner in Kipuhulu, the Department of Interior. In practical terms, what does this translate into? What improvements can we expect to see in how our parks are managed? One example of the need for more consistent rules and enforcement is how access to the trail to hui'be is managed. No one knows the trail to hui'be better than the native Hawaiians who lived there for generations. We know the flora, the fauna that belong there and those that are invasive. Yet some kupuna followed the reason, asked for permission to take a group of young people on an educational walk to the Kau'ou' side of the bay. We were denied permission. We respected the decision and with great frustration canceled our plans. But that is not the case with many outsiders who simply take to the trail without first getting permission to do so from the park authorities. Flouting rules brings its, its own rewards, apparently. There are a few, if any, consequences of the violations because enforce- enforcement is lax. But the risk of damage to our native plants is real because those who are unfamiliar with the area do not know what they are damaging or if they are trampling on precious native plants or archaeological sites. As a member of the Kipuhulu Hana, I worked with a group of kupuna and committed grassroots advocates deeply invested in the protection and preservation of our aina, land and water. We are hopeful that our efforts at establishing a community-based subsistence fishing area CBSFA in Kipuhulu will move forward with greater speed than has been the case with other efforts across our islands thus far. It took Milo Lee on Hawaii Islands seventeen years before he completed the cycle of public consultation, hearing, and review. It finally received a seal of approval from the governor many months ago. I am confident that with lessons learned, we are on a path, a much faster path to securing CBSFA status support Kipuhulu. We see and appreciate the greater urgency and responsiveness from DLNR to move our recommendations forward. Meanwhile, we would appreciate more clarity on the impact of co-management of our national parks. Whether we are entering a new era, what the MPS call collaborative and cooperative management remains to be seen. We recognize the progress that has been made and look forward to working with the authorities, pulling Dar and DLNR to accelerate the progress for the sake of the island's families that are supported for generations in Kipuhulu. Mah- mahalo. Aloha.
Mahalo.
Sorry, David, I missed one. I get um, Lava'ea Lin will be the final.
Okay.
Thanks, man.
Aloha. Aloha, everyone. Thank you for being here. Uh, my name is Lava'ea Lin and I'm the eldest granddaughter of Bruce Lin Senior, Uncle John Lin's brother. Um, and I'm honored to be here in the presence of my Kipuhulu Ohana. Um, just like most testimonies, um, I'm a Kama'a Ina and lineal descendant of Kipuhulumoku. I was raised in Hana, Kipuhulu, and Kau'ou' all my life. And I've firsthand seen the impacts of overfishing and the misuse of um, the resources here on the coast, Ma'aka, Makai. Um, this is our way of life. You know, we all live this way. We, we fish to feed our families. We gather just to put food on our table. And we malama la'a Ina and aloha'a Ina in every way that we can. Um, I'm in full support of the Kipuhulumoku CBSFA. Um, I think it's imperative that we continue to malama'a Ina, the people of this place, um, to malama la'a Ina and to lead the way for everyone else so they can, you know, follow. Um, it's important that we malama la'a Ina so the aina can malama us today, tomorrow, and for the future generations to come. Um, it's in our blood to protect the land that we live on and to sustain ourselves. So we have the opportunity to give back to the land that raised us. Um, I stand with my Kipuhulu Ohana in full support of the Kipuhulumoku CBSFA. Mahalo. Aloha.
Mahalo.
Okay, David. That's, that's all. That's all we got.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll take Zoom testimony. If you have registered for this Zoom hearing, we will presume that you're interested in providing testimony and we will call your name in the order you have signed up. If you do not wish to provide oral testimony, please simply indicate so when we call your name, or you can let us know through the chat feature. Okay, first up on Zoom, we have Shane Senensi. Please uh, start your video and unmute yourself and proceed.
Hey, aloha Kakao, um, and uh, mahalo for having this tonight. Um, I'm Shane Senensi of your East Maui Councilman. And sorry I can't be there tonight in, in the community as I'm in central Maui for council meetings this week. Um, I did wanna dedicate my testimony tonight to Uncle John Lin in his memory. And I wanted to speak in strong support of the CBSFA designation for Kipuhulu. Um, this designation has been a labor of love for thirteen years. And so it will allow the community to practice their traditional fishing traditions well into the future. A locally managed fishery will uh, help to keep the commercial fishing industry off of our reefs and well outside of the shoreline where all of our estuaries lie. And this will increase stock biomass for subsistence fishing practices. Um, in these times of uncertain times of inflation, food insecurity, and climate change, it is now more uh, important than ever to preserve the fishing ko'a that was given to us by the Akua'a, Ai'ai, and Kula'kai. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next, we have Madeline McKeeg.
Hi, aloha. Uh, mahalo for your time tonight. My name is Madeline McKeeg and I am the Policy Manager for the Council for Native Plant Advancement. And I am speaking on behalf of the organization in strong support of the Kipuhulu CBSFA. For some background, CNHA is a member-based 501(c)(3) nonprofit org with a mission to enhance the cultural, economic, political, and community development of native islands. And we are here tonight to make sure that the Kipuhulu community is heard loud and clear. The CBSFA would offer an additional layer of protection as well as effectuate the state's affirmative duty to protect and preserve native Hawaiian traditional and customary practices. Kipuhulu Ohana have always been and still remain the guiding voice for the Moku as it navigates the dramatically declining health and abundance of the marine resources in their water. The proposed rules for the Kipuhulumoku CBSFA are really well thought out. They were developed over a decade of conversations with kupuna, East Maui residents, fishers, state and county agencies, and science experts. Additionally, Kipuhulu Ohana spent several years on outreach to gather input and grow support for the designation. They had community meetings, individual and family interviews, talk story sessions, educational tables. The proposed boundaries and regulations in this management plan, including the sanctuary and opihi rest areas, the gear and equipment restrictions, the limits on taking native limu, all of that will undoubtedly help to restore the Kipuhulu CBSFA designation along with a collaborative management plan. All of that will provide Kipuhulu an invaluable tool to help reduce and hopefully eliminate unsustainable harvest by changing human behavior and allowing fish populations to stabilize and recover. The health and resilience of the fishing area is integral to ensure the subsistence, cultural, and religious practices that continue for current and future generations. And frankly, who better to steward the land than the people who have been here since time immemorial? Designation would serve to acknowledge and reinforce the kuliana that this community holds. And it would empower them to have a greater say regarding the management of the resources that have sustained their families for countless generations already. This is already the kuliana of the Kipuhulu community and it is only right to make it official. Accordingly, CNHA strongly supports this proposal and we urge the department to look favorably on their application. The community has waited years for these protections and for this path towards self-determination. And they should not have to wait a day more. Mahalo for your time tonight.
Mahalo. Next up, we have Ka'imi Kaupiko.
Aloha Kakao. Um, mahalo everybody for um, allowing me this opportunity to uh, give my testimony and credibility. I am the Executive Director of a nonprofit, Kaladi Halehu, which so blessed to receive uh, the approval from the, on the board last year for our CBSFA and I, I humbly come here tonight to acknowledge the work of the Kipuhulumoku and the Kipuhulu Ohana as they go forward on this next journey for their Ohana. Um, we just wanted to share our aloha. Um, it's been a long journey for you guys. I know our Ohana is very supportive. My father sends his wishes. He was there long ago when he was greeted by Uncle John and Auntie Tweedy during their time that they're doing all the Hana to caretake Kipuhulu. And it is so important that we continue to acknowledge the work of our people, acknowledge the work of this community as it will be just a third community to receive this important designation of rules and then the ability to manage their resources. Like many of the other people that have gone on tonight, I uh, Kakao, all of them, all of their mana'o, all the work that their kupuna has done who are not here, I continue to acknowledge that. So I just wanted to come on and give my um, continuous support. Tonight is a wonderful day for our Ahui as we see so much overwhelming support for this Ohana. So I just wanted to share my aloha. I'm calling you from the Big Island. I'm not there, but some of my Ohana has come, so um, I strongly urge that the board approves their proposal. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Aloha. Next up, next up, we have Kevin Chang.
Yeah, how's it? Um, God bless everybody in that room at One'ona Church. Um, and to the Board of Land Natural Resources. My name is uh, Kevin Chang. I'm the Executive Director of Kua'a Ina Ulu'a'amo. Um, we have our Planner Nigel there with the community. Um, wish I could be there, wish we could all be there for you. Um, Kipuhulu Ohana is one community of about a dozen communities that really met in two thousand and three. And when they met in two thousand and three, um, they created the organization really that I work for today, Nigel and the rest of our team. Um, and to me that says, I, I, I think, instead of repeating what other folk says, that to me, it was more than ten years. If you look back at two thousand and three, or you look back, look back at the time when Kipuhulu Ohana, the hui'maka'a Ina na'omakana, and the hui'malama when they were created was in and around nineteen ninety-four, when the passage of the CBSFA law occurred. And so there was vision and dream of communities for what we're doing today thirty years ago. When I started this work, um, and I have a list somewhere, there was at least a dozen or more communities that wanted to do this, but they all sort of fell along the way because of the lengthy process, which I think does not have to be as lengthy as it is. And so I'm encouraging this board um, to help us make it less lengthy. Um, I also wanted to say to the board, you know, we've talked recently about a nineteen ninety-eight policy that this board made, and I believe it's still relevant today. Um, that says that the highest priority, when we're talking about caring or malama, malama'ing the resources of our place um, is first to the cultural and natural resources of the place. And when I think of that word, cultural, natural resources, culture does not exist without people. And so the people in that room there at One'ona Church, do a church are the cultural resources that will keep and care for that place. And will move our government forward, making environmental governance and management a part of citizenship the way it once was in these lands. And with that, um, uh, lastly, you know, in this process too, so for me, it's like three decades really. But that three decades, yeah. Um, not only are we now missing uh, Uncle John today, but we're missing others who are, would have been here to support him, to support Auntie Tweedy and the Ohana there. Uncle Tommy and Annie Hashimoto from A'ena. And Carlos Andrade from A'ena, A'ena. Henry Walter, Henry Chengwo, Walter Komonov, Ebo Beach, Ebo Limu Project. Teddy Blake of Koloa. Gil Kaheli, Walter Paulo, and many others from Milo Lee. And um, just think of them, um, when thinking about this, because it's more than about time. Mahalo.
Hey, mahalo. Next, we have Wailea Lind.
Wailea. Aloha. Uh, my name is Wailea Lind. I was born in Hana and raised in Kipuhulu. I am in full support of the Kipuhulu Ohana CBSFA proposal. Um, I now reside on the island of Oahu. Uh, we do travel back and forth to visit with Ohana and also more so to expose and educate my son on the way, on how I was raised. Um, to respect, understand, connect, and learn um, the importance of our, our Hana and our connection with the land and the sea. The health of the land and the sea directly affects all of us. I support all the Kipuhulu CBSFA's proposed rules, especially the bag and size limits, restrictions on nets, um, fishing poles, the seasonal closures and opihi rest areas. I believe that this should be implemented on all the islands here in Hawaii. Uh, living here in Oahu, we see firsthand the overfishing, um, the overharvesting of limu, opihi, and the complete breakdown of ahupuaas. It makes me appreciate and value the way that I grew up and how important it is to protect the resources of Kipuhulu, not only for my son, but all the future generations um, of Kipuhulu and East Maui. So mahalo for your time.
Mahalo. Next up, we have Henry Silva.
Hello, everyone. My name is Henry Silva. And I was born and raised on the island of Wau. But I have genealogical ties to Kipuhulu. Living on Oahu these past forty-three years, I've seen firsthand on what overfishing along with overharvesting can do. Bottom line is, everyone just knows how to take, take, and take. I fully support Kipuhulu CBSFA in what they are trying to do. Educate. To educate people more on bag limits, limu harvesting, opihi rest areas, along with net and pole restrictions. I feel with proper guidance and not I feel with proper guidance and knowledge, people would understand how important our ecosystem is and why we need to protect what we have now before it's too late. Mahalo for you guys' time, and letting me speak.
Hey, mahalo. Next, we have Kellye Nixon. Kellye, would you like to provide testimony? Okay, moving on, let's go to Kaleo Kini.
Aloha. My name is William Kaleo Kini Senior. I was born and raised in a moku of Hana. A'wahu pu'aa is new mawu. From a kahkai of Kawai Papa to pu'e'u kahi, Hana Bear, Ka'wiki, and Wananalua. My grandfather, John Kepo'a, I'm moku Kaleo, was a corner hiki of Hana Maui. He and his four brothers would paddle their canoes with their huge lau and circle a school of akuli towards the shore. One brother would signal from with two red flags atop of Ka'wiki Hill. Then grandpa would surround and circle the akuli. And they would dive without scaring the akuli and keep everything in control until they would get near to the shore. And all Ahana from east Maui, Wa'ilua, Ha'ilii, Muelo, Tukenai Peninsula, Nahiko, Tukeleku, TuHana Malie, Honamalie, Wa'napanapa. And then from the west, Kamhamoa, Kowale, Kipahulu, Ka'po, Kanaya, Lapa Ru's Be. Ohana would walk miles around their kupuna. The fathers and mothers would carry their babies and on their backs and their ukana. Because the the world, Tutu Kaleo surrounding Akuli, we go and gather up and walk the king's highway from their communities all the way to pu'e'u kahi, Hana Bear. And we'll be bustling with activity and helping hands, kupuna, husband, wives engaging. Our families being industrious from us, lands, Ohana, using traditional and fishing, using every customary practice and knowledge passing down from generation to generation. Ponam, ponam mauna to the moana for their food sources. And Tutu, Ilinae Kaleo, knew all of fishing ko'unas in Wa'Kaloa. With his chonet and everybody, he had one whole entourage, waiting, keeping, still, watching, and waiting, and no move. One throw, and his net would be full of fish. And they would help him to open a fish, so he can wrap them up and go again. And they stay all day, they follow him, and every throw he get, his net all full. And when the family go home, they all, they, they pu'olo would be all full and be thankful. And, 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 and my grandpa always reported his love for the moana, so every Kanaka, and then the mountains, and they go get the o'opu and the opai. And my mother was a gatherer and a healer with her natural medicines. And they don't, and they don't tell anybody outside us. On the Ohana, before the fishing spring, he was always give his biggest prize, the kumun, the big red kumun, that he would bring to the, to his fishing shrine in Kahou'olave, and he, and he gives to the, to the fishing god. I stand in strong support of Kipuhulu CBSFA, so they continue the cultural and traditional practices. Mahalo. Aloha.
Mahalo. Next, we have Wali Ito.
Aloha, Maikako. Thanks for this opportunity, David. My name is Wali Ito. I'm zooming in from the ahupua of Kapalama. They're in the lower slopes of Kapalama, Oahu. I, I have a Bachelor of Science degree in marine, marine biology. I finally graduated college in 2014. I'm a retired limu coordinator for Ko'a Ina Ulu'a Wamok. I am currently project coordinator for the Ebo Limu Project. But I am here to testify from my experience as a spearfisherman. I've been, I've been in ocean, I've been spearfishing in and around the waters of Oahu for over 60 years. And as previous testifiers have mentioned, you know, we saw decline in the fishery, I think more so on Oahu than anyplace else. And, you know, kind of embarrassed to admit that at a time where I had plenty of fish, you know, I took too many times, I took too much, and ended up like bagging them and throwing them in the freezer. And, you know, five, six months later, freezer burned, throw them away. And it wasn't until I saw, I noticed the decline of the fishery that I thought, oh, I need to change my practice. But, you know, the practice that I did at that time was, was all legal, yeah. It was all according to, I've always practiced, I always followed the state fishing rules. And so what that demonstrated to me is that the fishing rules were, and probably still are inadequate. And that's why this, this co-management deal with the community, with the CBSFA, is a way to tighten up those rules and to ensure that at least the community, CBSFA community, can ensure that fish population or, and limu population continues for future generations. In 2009, I met, well, I met Uncle Henry Changwo around 2005, 2006, but in 2009, he asked me to join him in his efforts to talk about and teach about limu. And just so happened that 2009 was the first year of the Hana Limu Festival. And that's when I met, you know, John and Tweedy Lynn. And from then, you know, we've become fast friends, and I've learned so much from them. Just like Shane Sinencio, I also want to dedicate my testimony to, to Uncle John, I miss him. You know, the, well, I, I mentioned that the, the state fishing rules don't work. And part of the reason that it doesn't work is because every ahupua is different, you know, it's different circumstances, water flow, reef structure. And it's the people, the community that know, the intimate knowledge of all of this different, you know, all of this, and they, with this knowledge, they would be the best to determine the fishing rules for the community. One thing about CBSFA is it's inclusive and not exclusive, contrary to what some people think, they want to keep people out, and that's not the case. CBSFA rules are rules that the community imposes upon themselves. They are restricting themselves to these rules, and all, all that's being asked is for whoever comes in, comes into the community to follow the same rules that they, they have. I see my timer ran. I got other stuff to say, but I think I'll stop here. I think I said enough. So mahalo Nui, 100% in support of Kipuhulu CBSFA. Mahalo.
Hey, mahalo. And if you have additional testimony that you'd like to submit, you can also submit written testimony as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Mahina Poipoi. Aloha.
Aloha. Okay, before I start, would you like me to do video on or video off? Am I coming across okay?
Yep, it's fine for now.
Okay. Aloha, my name is Mahina Poipoi. I'm the State House Representative for District 13, which includes Kipuhulu. I'm here today to testify in strong support of the proposal to designate and adopt the rules for a Kipuhulu community-based subsistence fishing area. This effort, as many have said, is more than a decade in the making, it's generations in the making. Many years of kilo of citizen science, of data collection, of public outreach, education, of community meetings, of DAR meetings. These efforts are massive undertakings of a process for both community and the department, with the payoff being healthier and more abundant and complete ecosystems for the future generations of all life, and that benefits everyone. This work by Kipuhulu Ohana and the community spans decades and generations, and still they persevere with such diligence because it's their kuliana and they have such a deep connection to and love of their place and ina. This opportunity for rulemaking is a very bottoms-up process that is grassroots, as you can get in the best way, a true example of what can be achieved when we allow for community-led and government-supported initiatives to take place. CBSFA rules allow for and is an avenue for bringing native Hawaiian traditional and customary practices and customary law to be incorporated into and recognized as state law, which is huge for the preservation and the elevation of native Hawaiian and traditional customary practices and resource management. I prefer the bottoms-up rather than top-down bureaucratic approach because it makes the space for communities to take responsibility and to get involved and be supported by the government, helping to shift our government toward approaches that are more uplifting and empowering of our people rather than oppressing. We know that Dealinar has such a vast amount of land, of water, of ocean to manage, and this is a great opportunity to bring community into that management. And here they are stepping up to say, we know this place, we want to help, and we want to work together with the state. And on the other side, we see the state, or we hear Dealinar expressing desire to partner and build relationships and trust and co-management with community. Well, here is a primed opportunity to put those words into practice. I support, and I strongly believe in this and that so much good can come from making these kinds of partnerships between community and the state. I know the Kipuhulu Ohana and community have gone through the iterations and the consultations to develop a proposal that is truly reflective of their kilo, of their community, of the feedback received, of their knowing of the resources and of their generational wisdom. And overall, these rules not only align with, but enhances the state's ability to achieve its duty and obligation to maintaining healthy public trust resources. So again, I'm in full and strong support of this designation and the rules as proposed. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next up, we have Wa'ilana Maderos.
Aloha. Aloha, Maikako. My name is Wa'ilana Maderos, and I am in full support of the Kipuhulu CBSFA rules as envisioned by its community. I'm a daughter of South Kona. My family descends from Ka'avaloa down into Waiala, where I currently reside, as well as Ho'oke'ana, where I grew up. Both my grandmother and grandfather are prominent South Kona community members. My grandfather is a skilled fisherman and farmer. And my grandmother's Ohana is part of the, some of the last Ohana in Ho'oke'ana to fish opalu in the traditional way. Both of my lines have lived off of the land and ocean, practicing and following the kapu and kanawai that has been put in place since time immemorial. My family also has ties to Ha'ena Kawai, as well as Miloli'i, both CBSFA's communities in their own respects. And although I am not personally from Kipuhulu, I've witnessed the ways in which rest areas and being mindful of different fish spawning seasons have affected not only the underwater communities that rely on, that we rely on for sustenance, but the communities of Kanaka, whose very cultural practices depend on the survival of these kin. As we have seen with the Tri-Weight Initiative with Ka'upulehu, restrictions work, fish have returned, and populations have increased exponentially in the past few years. And this wouldn't have been possible without the community pressuring for this initiative. I'm blessed to live in areas where we still can gather fish, O P he and limu, because they are still present. My communities know that to preserve these for the next generations, we must treat these kin in the ways that our ancestors did, take only what need. David Malo, who many might know, asserted that ina is not ina without the presence of Kanaka. And without Kanaka, it is just moku. This applies to the surrounding seas because, as we all know, it's all connected. The presence of Kanaka in ways that are consistent with our ancestors is needed in these places in order for ina to be that which feeds. We must tend to the relationship that is ina. We must tend to our non-human kin in the ways that we know how to. CBSFA's recognize the relationship that Kanaka have to ina and the interconnectedness of the two. We are ina. Therefore, Kanaka are the ones who know what to do. The communities of specific places know their ina and their kapu so intimately. So it's, so it's extremely important to let the community decide what happens to these places. It's important for the community to manage their resources because the community are the ones that rely on these species for their survival. We must revert to the practices of our kupunas to sustain the future generations. I want my keke, my future keke, to not only enjoy O P he, ha'uke'uke, mui kala, and opalu, but to know what they are and to see them in the water. Ultimately, if there's no more fish, there will be no Kanaka. And you know what our ancestors had? Chokefish. So aloha and mahalo Nui for your time.
Hey, mahalo. Next up, we have Le'Mamo Lynn Strauss.
Knock it out of the park, babe.
Aloha.
Sorry, trying to turn my camera, but it doesn't, it doesn't work. I will just go with it as a flow. Aloha, Kako. O'Le'Mamo Lynn Ko'uinoa. No Kipuhulu mai vau, ak'a noho vau, mahonau nau kamoku ke'abe. Ke'kumu. Ai. Sorry, what happened to my camera?
Turned on, babe.
Ba'mak ke'kula oho'oke'ana. This is my spoken word. This is a declaration of preservation, so as not to inspire desperation. Why can't we say no more? It has been such a chore to protect this space from the human race. Believe me when I say, it has been one heck of a long-distance race. I am here to shout out, take only what you need, and please stamp out the greed. Because finding a way to save kukui be, the ina calls on all of us to obey. Oi warriors, pow pray, stand tall as there just might be a way. CBSFA, hooray! I support Kipuhulu's proposal to designate Exmoku as a community-based subsistence fishing area. This includes all of the proposed rules. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next, we have Paul Strauss. Oh, you just put yourself on me.
Sorry, alright, aloha.
Aloha.
My name is, sorry, having the same struggles as Mama. Start video, there we are. Aloha. Blakako, mahalo for this opportunity. My name is Paul Strauss, someone who began his career in resource management, specifically in the marine ecosystem. And I really understand the importance of incorporating local culture and communities in the management of local resources, but believe it to be critical for their successful long-term management. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify, and I definitely support the entire proposal. Aloha.
Hey, mahalo. And next up, we have Ka'u Me'alaa Nui Lynn Strauss.
Strauss, kikai mo'opuno John Kaiten Jr., noho vau mahonau nau kamoku ke'abe, ahe'ha'manau vau makikulo ever Nui Kaimalino. Hello, everyone. I came here today to show my support for the CBSFA and what they're doing. Hello, everyone. I came here today to show my support for the CBSFA and what they're doing for the Kipahulu, Kipahulu moku, helping with the preservation of the resources for the, for the ina and its people. The decrease in the fish has been drastic, so I hope this goal is seen through to the end and accomplished. That is my testimony. Mahalo.
Hey, mahalo. Next up, we have Kaike'ana Kachi.
Aloha, everybody.
Aloha.
My name is Kaike'ana Kachi, um, from moku oke'ave, uh, but with mo'oku'au'au from Maui. And I strongly support the Kipahulu Ohana and this proposal for CBSFA designation and its management rules. I agree with all the wonderful testimony that we've had tonight in support. Um, I'm a supporter of Ka'upulehu, ha'ena, milili'i, mo'omomi, and of course, Kipahulu. And I would first applaud the, um, massive amount of time spent to create this plan, the decades it took to, to make this plan. And, um, just would like to say that we, as these other communities, and, and of course, you folks in the state, um, I think we have to do everything we can to support and elevate, make their effort easier in any way that we can, and I think that starts with the simple supporting of this plan. We know that community-managed areas in Hawaii create more fish biomass than even fully so, fully protected areas. And like Spence said earlier tonight by many folks, that ike, the knowledge, the aloha that's rooted in lineal descendants and the people of place just simply cannot be matched by other management options. And I agree that the current rules are inadequate. And I do feel that each rule in this package, um, is a product of mo'oku'au'au and generational ike kupuna, and that every detail of this plan has been carefully worded, penned with the utmost care, with the most pono intention, and after many years of thoughtful deliberation. So again, I acknowledge that immense work, um, all that work just to get to where we are today in this hearing, and ensuring that everything we do as a collective moving forward is to support these people of Kipahulu, their ina, and the intent of this CBSFA and its plan. So I support it fully, and mahalo nui to the Kipahulu Ohana, everyone in, um, DAR and all the various communities that showed up tonight to support this pono effort. Mahalo nui and aloha nui.
Mahalo. Next up, we have Briann Fong.
Aloha mai kako. My name is Briann, or Bri Fong, and I am from Kamaki'auahu in the moku of Kona. And I am here today to express my wholehearted support for the adoption of Hawaii Administrative Rules thirteen dash sixty point one-one, Kipahulu Community-Based Subsistence Fishing Area on the island of Maui. While I may not, while, while I may not be a native of Kipahulu, nor am I Kanaka Ma'uli or possess the lineage of levaya, I have the privilege and have been fortunate enough to grow up in Hawaii, a place where the cultural importance of past generations, the wisdom of our elders and ancestors ike kupuna is profoundly evident. This wisdom is especially critical when it comes to the stewardship of our environment, the ina and ka'i, and by extension, the well-being of all of us as human beings. The amoku'a and kupuna possess the extraordinary ability to observe and understand their surroundings in order to establish a deep connection with the land and sea, allowing them to know precisely how much to take and when, ensuring food for themselves and their family. We have seen communities such as ha'ena and milili'i flourish under the CBSFA model. By empowering community members to set guidelines for fishing practices in their area, we not only enhance the livelihoods of the people, but we are also nurturing and protecting our environment. In the face of escalating challenges such as climate change and tourism, Kipahulu community members have witnessed its harmful effects ecologically, socio-economically, and culturally. Thus, I fully agree with all the rules that have been meticulously and intentionally developed by Kipahulu Ohana and the community, particularly the five-inch minimum size requirement for kolei, one of many endemic, one of the many endemic Hawaiian species, so that we can decrease the risk of unsustainable and inappropriate harvesting of culturally important species in Kipahulu moku. I also agree with the no-take or possession of native limu with no, with roots attached, as limu have immense cultural significance and have been nutritionally key in traditional Hawaiian diet. These rules not only sustain Hawaiian culture through practices and subsistence, but also protect the island's fragile ecosystems and preserves its unique biodiversity. Granting Kipahulu community members the agency to co-develop and co-manage the rules and regulations for their own space is not only vital for healing the environment, but also for ensuring the abundance of fish, limu, and other sources of food and culture for current and future generations. This is a vital step in upholding the sovereignty and rights of native Hawaiians, particularly their right to preserve their culture and provide sustenance for themselves and their ohana. So who better to malama the ina and ka'i than the people and practitioners of the very place? Community input and involvement are crucial to ensuring that the relationship between people and place is maintained with the utmost care. The well-being of our environment is inextricably linked to the well-being of our people, and thus, it is our moral obligation to steward the ina and ka'i in a pono way, in a just and responsible manner. I stand in full support of the CBSFA rules as envisioned by the Kipahulu community. Mahalo nui for your time and consideration.
Mahalo. Next, we have Konoe Laney Stewart.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, awesome. Um, mai kama'ani ka'ili aloha Kipahulu moku. Aie kama'ani ma'a'au Lahaina moku. Aloha nui kako. Uh, o'konoe Laney Stewart ko'u inoa no Lahaina mai au. Uh, my name is Konoe. I'm from Lahaina, um, and I'm speaking as an individual from the Lahaina community in strong support of the proposal to adopt administrative rules for CBSFA in Kipahulu moku. Uh, I have had the opportunity to work alongside with the Kipahulu Ohana, while working with the Nature Conservancy Hawaii as a marine fellow, conducting opihi and limu surveys, and more recently as a kumu at Ke'kula Kayapuni'au Lahaina, uh, when they hosted our Kayapuni'au Ohana a few years ago, on their ina, sharing their ike and pelina to their kula'i vi, and their unwavering aloha and commitment to continue to malama their place and its resources, uh, not just for their own ohana and their own community, but for our ohana, including us that are passing by and stopping by in Ismaui to learn more about their continuous efforts and engagement to see the CBSFA come to life. Um, reading through the rules package, the amount of time and hard work is evident in the details provided for every section, especially for the permitted and prohibitive, prohibited activities. And I commend this huge effort to be able to fulfill the purpose of this CBSFA, uh, to involve ohana of that place in decision-making for those resources, to protect those ocean resources and our, and our cultural practices, and to support the subsistence lifestyle of kupaa ina. As our Lahaina community rallies together to show up, uh, just as this community has, as well as many others, meeting after meeting, its community-based efforts such as this that continue to inspire us and lead the way for Hawaii that we collectively envision, uh, a future of abundance so that our livelihoods and our cultural practices continue to exist and continue to be practiced, uh, for this generation and for generations to come, uh, now and forever. I would like to mahalo pia the entire kayaulu of Kipahu, of Kipahulu, uh, for being kupaa in our ike kuuna and, and this long CBSFA process, and, and also mahalo nui to the communities and ohana that have paved the way for this opportunity, ha'ena, mo'omomi, and milili'i. Uh, again, my name is Konoe Laney Stewart, and I support the approval of the administrative rules to establish a CBSFA in the Kipahulu moku. Aloha nui.
Mahalo. Next, we have Kalama Ehu Takahashi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Aloha.
Um, aloha mai, my name is Kalama Ehu Takahashi. I'm a, a community member over, out here in Lahaina. And although I'm not a descendant of Kipahulu, I have been, I've had the opportunity as a community member and as a visitor to that moku to benefit from the intergenerationally informed practices and stewardship and education provided by those ohana of that place. Um, I'm an educator at the University of Oa'ama'noa and also, um, culture, cultural resource researcher for, for, um, a private firm and stuff like that. Um, but this, it's a, it is very clear to me to see here, especially in this time of adversity that we are facing as a community in Lahaina, with a, um, with a very fluid situation and, and the impacts of climate change and, um, and external influences impacting our resources, our communities, and the, and our future. Um, I believe, I strongly believe that the, the loina, the rules, and the designation of Kipahulu moku is a step in the right direction when we look for, um, when we are looking for answers to questions about governance, resource management, and, um, really continuing the practice of our cultural, our cultural resources, yeah, um. This place, these places as va'ipu pune'au or as like, as storied places that are important to our histories, um, they, they teach us a lot. They are the reason why these communities have, have the resilience to stay here, and they, and they have the tools, the ike, and the, um, and the capacity to show, to continue this, to continue these practices, these places, and our, and the essence of our culture as Hawaiians into, into the unforeseeable future for generations to come. So, again, Kalama Ehu Takahashi, um, community member from Lahaina living in Kana'apali moku in support of the CBSFA. Mahalo nui to the, to the Kipahulu, Kipahulu Ohana for your aloha education. Um, and the, and the best example to be a kayaulu and ohana, um, and mahalo to all of those that come before, ha'ena, mo'omomi, or milili'i. Aloha nui.
Mahalo. Next, we have Malia Kipapa.
Belina mai kako, Malia Kipapa, calling in from Kahalu'ukona Hawaii. Uh, my name is Malia Kipapa. I'm representing my Kipapa Ohana from the moku of Kona and the au'ua'ua of Pahuehui on the leeward side of moku oke'ave. And we are in full support of the adoption for the proposal rules of Kipahulu CBSFA. My connection with Kipahulu is through a number of community networks like Kai'kulianna, Kua, and the Maui Nui Makai Network. We also consider Kipahulu an extension of our ohana on Maui. And I recall first meeting Uncle John and Auntie Tweedy in two thousand and nine when I started working for Hawaii Community Stewardship Network, which then evolved into what we are familiar with today known as Kua. Auntie Tweedy Lynn, mahalo auntie for being able to share space with you virtually, but, um, from Kona, we send our love. Um, honoring Uncle John and his brother, Uncle Mike Lynn. Mahalo for grounding us in this evening public meeting by reminding us how important muolelo is in our relationships to Kanaka and ina, in which connects us. And the takeaway from that moku injury, im- imagery and muolelo, which is pointing out the importance of Kipahulu on Maui, and it being metaphorically viewed and is tied in the muolelo or story as the fruitful growing of Maui. Um, this hands down demands protection of this kapu, which we have all shared and talked about, which made a perfect segue into my testimony around kapu and kanawai. Um, like many other community efforts in establishing fishing rules or kanawai for the perpetuation of cultural practices related to harvesting and taking care of our marine resources as we depend on them for food, medicine, and the perpetuation of tradis- traditional practices, there needs to be rules in place. The marine resources we take care of are our kapu, in which our kanawai or rules of regulating behavior are associated with. By establishing boundaries, species-specific bag limits, size limits, and seasonal gathering periods specific to Kipahulu are important. And us as a collective need to support communities like Kipahulu to ensure that their kapu or marine resources and traditional practices related to place are maintained in perpetuity. Based on over ten years of data collection, in addition to multiple generational knowledge holders that support and confirm the need for rules and regulations for their community in which have been thoughtfully and strategically considered, the state needs to look at this as a partnership, an opportunity to ensure that these relationships and efforts are acknowledged, supported, and incentivized. In closing, I mahalo and commend the community and families of Kipahulu for their continued hard work, endurance, and aloha as they lead and set the foundation and Papa in this time for their future beneficiaries. Again, Ka'ohana Kipapa from Kona, Pahuehui, are in full support and stand in solidarity with the Kipahulu Ohana and community for the proposed adoption of Kipahulu CBSFA rules. Mahalo nui, Ka'ohana Kipapa.
Mahalo. Next up, we have Bruce Lind. Bruce Lind, would you like to provide testimony?
Uh, yeah. My name is Bruce Lind. And I'm in support of the Kipahulu moku and the CBSFA. And, uh, and I, and I'm one of the Linds. And John, John Lynn was my, is my brother. So I'm in support for, for all of this that is him and his family and the rest of the Kipahulu Ohana. He is, is putting this out for our community. And I'm glad that everything is, it looks good and hope, hopefully you give, give full support for the people of Kipahulu. Uh, I wanna thank you and mahalo for all that you have done.
Hey, mahalo. Next, we have Joseline Costa.
Okay, I, I think I'm gonna leave my camera off, cause it, it gets kinda sketchy out here.
Okay.
Um, aloha, my name is Joseline Costa. Um, I wanna also dedicate my, um, testimony to, um, of John Lynn. You know, though we had lost him to a terrible illness, there was only one word I could think of that describes him, and that was health. He strived for health for the people, as well as the ina, the ocean, the ka'i, the, the vai, even the air. Um, I'm a, um, representative for, uh, um, Hamakua Loa'ua Ha'moku, which was created by, um, Act Two One Two as an arm, as an advisory for the BLNR. I strongly recommend the implementation, not for authorization, but surrender back to the moku, au'ua'ua'ili, from further destruction, um, desecration, um, and demise, as well as harm that has, that has been caused. I mean, no disrespect when I say that, because it looks as though the, the, um, powers that be are now making a turn for the better by trying to make this implementation. Um, I understand you operate under a system, I, that I would also struggle in, um. But I would also in, suggest to include the language of the kanawai that kept the balance and the relationship between Kanaka and the honua. This would be a true and honest sustainability. We must also partner with DLNR, Department of Health, Westpac in Noah, National Parks. Um, you cannot save the coastline and fishery, limu, crustacean, without water, prevention of nutrients, as they call it, and invasive species, as well as, um, pollutants coming into the ocean. Um, as this, as I see it, this, um, title, CBSFA, Community-Based Subsistence Fishery Area, I call it checking back seeing fishing ancestors. I would like to come also with some, um, suggestions. Um, some, the rules need to have implementation of some sort with policies. I would suggest that the community be the ones to create that policy for implementation. And the way you can do that is, because I know how shorthanded you folks get, how, you know, you cannot stretch. How, you know, you cannot stretch one person across that whole coastline to to police it or to um manage it. Uh, already seeing this turn of um. Acknowledging the the scientific expertise of the the people. That I would highly suggest to deputize that community. So you can then have the arm to do the the right work. Um and implement it correctly as it is being um um intention, the intention of this this um movement. So I highly, I highly um and strongly support. And hope that you can implement some of the suggestions I've I've given. Mahalo.
Hey, Mahalo. Next, we have Anella Angel. Anella, would you like to provide testimony? Okay, not hearing anything. We'll move on. Kowila Hanchet.
Belina Mai make here aloha. Ina Mommo o Maui hikina mai kavaika o ke'ana'i ai kamakani honi honi papalina o Ka'opo. Uh I'm calling in today from the Moku of Ka'opo in full support of the Kipuhulu CBSFA. This is such a beautiful evening. Thank you for creating this space and we know it comes. Built upon the foundation of many generations of effort. Everything has been said and I just wanna elevate what is in this circle. All of the kupuna that have worked and lived on this Aina the many generations. All of the Ohana, all of the Aina. Uh of this place. I'm a lineal descendant of Ka'opo and Hana. Uh I bring with me tonight my dad, Michael Paki Hanchet, who is at home on Molokai on the homestead. Um my mom, Carla Leola Niriti. And I think back to my childhood growing up in Ka'opo. And how powerful it is to be able to now raise my daughter here where I grew up in this Aina that fed us. We were a large family. Uh, eight kids and like many of the other families already shared. The way that we ate was from our Aina and from our Kai. And sometimes we would go hollow hollow with dad out on the cliffs out here. And what I remember about those times was how still he would be watching the, watching the ocean. And I would look and I wouldn't see anything. I would just see ocean. And he would look and he would see all of the different species and he would watch for what seemed like hours. And what seeped into me from those childhood times was this profound connectedness. When I think of that scene of my dad out there on those cliffs. It's like I couldn't tell what was my dad and what was the ocean. It seemed like one. And to have that kind of connectedness with Aina. Where it isn't just that which feeds us, but it's a part of us. Wan kupuna uh manaleo on Moloka'is is. Nak'a Aina hiho ike ia kapono kapoe. It is the land that reveals the goodness of its people. The land and the people are reflections of one another. We are on these intertwined traject- trajectories of well-being. When the land thrives, the people thrive. And Kipuhulu is helping us to remember that and return to that. Mahalo. Um Ka'opo Moku is in full support. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next, we have Mike Nakachi.
Aloha David, aloha Mike Kako, everyone. Um. Uh this is very humbling experience um to be um. In this time and space to offer testimony and uh favor of um Kipuhulu's um CBSFA effort. Um, it's kind of overwhelming to kind of come together. Um just hearing sister right before us um and my son earlier. We talk about certain things about Moku'auhowa, we talk about uh Mo'olelo. And um little do you know, we could all be related. It's it's kind of funny. Um and and I think about our Mo'oku'auhowa from. Uh Kalauhe'a to Keka'olike to Kamehameha Nui. Um to Kalani Helelani Paki, to Kealaka'i Paki, to Waipu'ilani Paki. To Julia Wong Aki, Eleanor Wa'ilani Aki, to my father, to me, to my children. That all originated from Maui Nui. Um. And my connection to Kipuhulu is that we have um been honored. Um, as lineal descendants of Maui and um being blessed as um. Coming from a lineage of Kahuman'au, we've had the ability to um. In the last forty years, go across the Pai Aina to witness certain things and um. Be at a spiritual place and time with many different Vahipanas of place. And Kipuhulu, Ka'opo, Nu'u, Hana. Ke'ana'i, all of those areas are very special and I reflect to a young, small kid time in the seventies. Visiting my auntie in Makawao and um tasting the ono of. Of Kipuhulu and I'll never forget the lomi halaloo and akulee that uh my uncle Kimo Niles made for me. Never having that before um. And and having opportunity in the seventies to go into a place that was uh far different than what it is today. Um we are all facing this dramatic change of um. Of no one asking permission, um no one checking in with the konuiki. Um. It it's not, it's not, it's not a failure of anything, but this is the prime example. Of seeing traditional customary practices at its finest. Aloha for Aina, to Malama Aina, to then restore Aina Momona and uh I'm just grateful. That we have people like Uncle John and Auntie Tweedy and. Um Uncle Parli Kanaka'ole, I just think of so many that have, that are not with us, that are guiding us to this and. Again, DAR um and the BLNR, this is the, this is the Kako thing to do and uh I'm just grateful to be. Um in this time and space with so many of you and uh want the best for Kipuhulu. Um as we have done with our own uh Ka'upulehu um tri-weight area. So um. We stand with you and we're a hundred percent behind this effort and thank you for the time and appreciate it. Mahaloonui, everyone.
Hey, Mahalo. Next, we have Jocelyn Hu'e'u.
Hi, aloha. Sorry, I didn't know I registered to do this. Um but Mahalo for giving me the time to speak. Um. I am not gonna put on my video. But um, yeah, Mahalo you guys. Uh Mahalo to the Kipuhulu Ohana for doing this. I am from. Ke'ana'i um and we stand with you guys. Um. Yeah, I am in full support of the CBSFA for Kipuhulu Ohana. Mahalo.
Hey, Mahalo. And next, we have Daviana McGregor. Daviana, would you like to provide testimony? Okay, not hearing anything. Um. Is there anyone else on the Zoom meeting that would like to testify that have, has not had the opportunity to do so? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I don't know if you can see my camera. Let me turn it on. Aloha, um my name is Kabika Kaina. Uh born and raised on a boy, currently residing in Montana. Uh, I've had the luxury in my lifetime to grow up and gather in that town. Wasn't afforded the privilege of most Hana people as my dad was not a hunter. Um nor a diver, nor a deep-sea fisherman. So we were what we called crabs, uh gatherers off the shoreline. Uh I was born and raised in the Huli'hana district, also known as Ha'ou. Um and I've gathered from the Pu'iki district all the way over to the Mualaya district, or as my dad would say, wherever your two feet could carry you. Uh I did not know I was gonna be doing this, so I don't have an elaborate speech, so I'll try to use some common knowledge to make some points. Uh we as native Hawaiians are uh oral history. Some of the oldest olis and meles that we know of are written of. Written of or written from or by people of Hana. Some of the biggest battles that we all know of in our history have taken place in Hana over its resources. Some of the greatest legends in our history, some of the greatest protectors of the ocean are from Hana. Speaking of Kuulakai and Ai'ai. What I see in in all of this is almost a a full circle. I've had the pleasure and uh the dignity of watching this grow as a seed. As the Pohaku Corporation, which my grandmother was a part of. We've seen that torch passed on to Uncle John and Mike Bin. And we've watched that seed grow into a quorum. My grandmother would say the Pohaku was protectors of the land. We've seen that quorum grow out there in Kipuhulu as purveyors of the land as they grew the taro back. And connected us back to the earth. What we see now is the full circle coming. Of our Ahupua'a system, which we all know of in our history, was the most successful at managing our resources. And in this whole endeavor, we see Kipuhulu bringing that circle to a close. Protectors of the land, purveyors of the kalo, and now protectors of the ocean. Completing our Ahupua'a from Ma'uka to Makai. We see nothing but good in this and hope that this will permeate through the rest of the state. So that people will know the knowledge is there, the knowledge is there. The knowledge has been passed down from generations and has been suppressed. It's time to let it grow. It's time to let it out. It's time for the state, the board, and everyone to let us protect our resources the way we know our kupuna did. The way we know our keke can and the way we were taught by our kupuna. As some of the kupuna of Hana would say, and all of us have heard this before, Hana is the pico. Till this day, Hana remains the pico of all resources on Maui. Everyone comes there. We also know that the pico provides nourishment as we grow in the womb of our parents. It's time to protect that nourishment. It's time to protect the pico. It's time to let us as native Hawaiians of this area do our job. I stand in full support of the Kipuhulu Ohana and I suggest everyone get behind this movement. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Okay, I would like to testify. Daviana McGregor.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, can show the video. It says the video cannot show. Okay. Okay, can you see now? Alright, aloha Kako. Um I'm Daviana, Dr. Daviana Pomeka'i McGregor, but I'm testifying on behalf of the Protek'olavi'Ohana. And the Protek'olavi'Ohana is um in very strong support of establishing rules. Uh that the, that is being put forward by the Kipuhulu Ohana for the community-based subsistence fishing area in Kipuhulu, Maui. Um and when I testify, I bring the manao of our dearly beloved Dr. Noah Emelulii, who passed uh almost a year ago. Who worked very closely with our um Ohana from Kipuhulu. Uh both to support Kipuhulu and Kipuhulu Ohana supported us. In the effort to stop the bombing of Koholavi and to now to heal it. And the fishing grounds uh and related traditional and customary practices of establishing fishing koa as markers. On the land dedicated to Kuula, Hina, and Ai'ai. And these serve as markers on the land for fishing grounds in the ocean. That tradition links. Kipuhulu as well as Ka'opo and Hamoa to us on Koholavi. Cuz Ai'ai, after he established the fishing koa at Ka'opo and uh Kipuhulu. He came over and established the fishing koa at Hakiu'ava. And so we are linked, the Protek'olavi'Ohana and the Kipuhulu Ohana are linked also in our Kuli'ana. To Malama and take care of the abundance of the near-shore reefs. So that we can provide for the health and well-being of our Ohana in Kipuhulu and. Koholavi. And this is also the the co- community-based subsistence fishing area tradition. Coming from Molokai where I I lived with Dr. Luli and we worked with Matt Poipoi. To uh establish a community-based subsistence fishing area for Mo'omomi that has still yet to um. Be approved, but we have also supported the efforts in Ha'ena and uh Milili'i. So uh just to reinforce, we did submit written testimony and the Protek'olavi'Ohana again stands in strong support. To allow the Kipuhulu community to reach the next critical step in this long process of ten years. And to have the administrative rules that they develop be approved. Uh in order to um allow them to manage the near-shore resources for the health and well-being of all of their Ohana. And we especially acknowledge um John Bin and um the Lin'Ohana for their continued efforts to Malama the ocean and near-shore waters for the community. Mahalo and aloha. And I'm coming from Honau Now. I didn't know if I would be able to testify cuz. I'm Anau'ahu, but I'm here tonight at Honau Now and we send our aloha to everyone. Aloha. Mahalo.
Hey, Mahalo. Um Kaleo Kinney, did you wanna provide testimony?
Uh aloha David, it's uh it's Presley Wan.
Hey, Uncle Press, aloha.
Aloha, that was me. Sorry for the glitches. Um. I just wanted to say aloha, aloha uh nui to the Kipu, Kipuhu, Kipuhulu Ohana and um. Congratulate them on this milestone um uh event. Uh my name is Presley Wan and I'm a lineal descendant of Pa'ena Ko'Kauai. And currently, I'm the president for Hui Makainana o Makana. And on behalf of our Hui, um we stand in strong support of Kipuhulu. Ohana and Kipuhulu CBSFA pursuit. They like Mo'omomi on Molokai and Ho'kana and Milili'i and also Ha'ena. Have dedicated twenty-plus years in pursuit of their CBSFA. We believe that CBS's CBSFA's are the modern-day um example of adaptive management. And especially in the face of ocean and climate changes and ocean warming, the people. Know of the, of the communities know their resources better than any agency. Or govern- government uh um regu- um any government agency. Uh DAR rules and regulations do not reflect these changes. Tradition and cultural and values and practices are based on observations. And that's why we had Napua No'iala and our kupuna had names for the sky, the winds, the rains. And and like Kipuhulu, our kupuna warned, warned us to pay attention to our resources. CBSA is working in Ha'ena. But CBSFA's are not the only answer, but it is a solution. So to the policymakers, I'm gonna ask you this question. Are, are you. Gonna take on a men- uh con- uh continental mentality or are you gonna take on a canoe mentality? Because we are in the middle of the ocean and we are in a canoe. So aloha for this opportunity. Aloha.
Mahalo. Anyone else on the Zoom that wishes to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none and hearing none. I'll continue. Okay, we will be accepting written testimony until Friday, November tenth, twenty twenty-three. Please mail testimonies to the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources, eleven fifty-one Punch Bowl Street, room three thirty, Honolulu, Hawaii, nine six eight one three. The address is at the bottom of the slide. And written testimony may also be submitted by email to DAR dot testimony at Hawaii dot gov. That email is also provided on the slide. Extended timeline and DAR recommendations. So this is the projected timeline for these rules after public hearing. The dates are estimates, assuming that no significant changes to the proposal need to be made based on the testimony received. Based on the testimonies presented tonight, the department will submit its findings and recommendations to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. If approved by the board, the Department of the Attorney General will conduct the final legal review. And if approved, the proposed rules will be given to the governor for his final approval. Should the governor grant approval, certified copies will be filed with the Lieutenant Governor's Office and after ten days it becomes effective as law. Are there any questions regarding this process? Okay, on behalf of the Board of Land and Natural Resources and the Division of Aquatic Resources, mahalo for attending this public hearing. It is now eight forty-two PM and this public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you for taking time out from your day to participate in this public hearing. Aloha.